Call the meeting order. Quick roll call. Judy up here? Joe? Jason? And Grant was apparently not here. The open meetings law is posted there on the back wall. Anybody have any interest in that? Sergeant Bead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without individual with liberty and justice for all.
And approval of minutes from the previous meeting. Any discussion on the minutes of the previous meeting?
If there's no motion to approve the meeting, the minutes of the previous meeting, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Judy?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
That's the motion carried, so they are approved. The next item is claims of payroll. I guess there will be discussion on that.
If there is none, I'll make a motion to approve claims of payroll.
I'll second our go ahead.
Well, call that Joe's second.
Should've checked more thoroughly into this because it cost me a lot of lawyers, you know, to get my life back untrapped. And I just, that's what I wanted to say, I feel like that, you know, should've checked out a lot more thoroughly and that I should've had the chance to, to judge the city council.
All right, anybody else who wants to finalize their discussion on this? Apparently not, I guess, thank you for your time.
Thank you for your time, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that things should be checked out a little more thoroughly. Thank you.
We're up to the reports, I guess police report is the first one on here. And it talks about discussion and action on ordinance to enforce fireworks regulations within the city. You got an ordinance such as that? You got something?
Well, it was discussed, I have nothing defined. I'm lacking any conversation or guidance beyond what we had at the meeting. I brought this, the center section there is a common way to approach it. If this copy of a different city code, seven three oh two, I'm not sure, there should be one for the chief if you get to the other end. Is there an extra one there?
There is an extra.
But this just has the regulation of the size of things and then throws it in right at the end and it can only be ignited between these dates. And then at the bottom, in that three oh four, there's, of course, distributors, jobbers, big outfits have to be licensed by the fire marshal. It also has a little provision that says the city council can authorize certain public exhibitions separately. You know, setting the dates, allowing for public exhibition, saying the fire marshal has to do it, but I don't get to make this stuff up, what do you guys want it to say?
I think this pretty much says.
I mean, that's reasonable content, if you pick the dates you want and leave it up to separate authorizations for public exhibitions. And there was questions raised about the festival and things like that, would you sure just take a request, pass a motion and say, that's okay? That would handle that. If you're gonna limit dates at all, what do you think of those?
Well, if they go with like a festival type deal where they have a big display, if that's put on by a pyrotech, he's gotta get a permit through the state. So if he would get the permit.
Well, yeah, they just create a rate set, that's really.
Yeah, but if he would get the permit through the state and then come to us and know by us that this is what they're planning, you know, I guess they would be getting a permit already.
If, if the fourth falls on Friday, families are doing things against them the sixth, can we change that just on?
Say whatever you want.
No, but can we, can we amend this for, just for one year? Because it'll only be one in every seven years probably, without that, but if we wanted to do that, could we do that?
Or just put the sentence in there now?
Right.
I mean, I don't think you'd want to, it doesn't, this version doesn't allow for that exception, it allows for exceptions for that in there, right? Public exhibition, but I can add a sentence that says, if the fourth falls on a Friday and it extends to the sixth through the weekend, that's your thought.
Or what if you just threw instead of put a specific date like that, just put on there something along the line of special, special events?
I think we already got that.
If they would approach the city and ask for special permission? Because I mean, right here, it's saying between June twenty fourth and July fifth of each year. Do we wanna, do we wanna have this on July fifth?
Make that one exception, make that one exception.
Yeah, unless it's a Friday.
Well, you have a June regular wording.
Right.
Do you wanna say June twenty fourth to July fifth or not go back to June twenty fourth to July fourth?
I'm okay with it, I don't know.
I'd be fine to go with those dates, June twenty fourth to July fifth, but with like Bruce said, another short sentence that would say if.
What's the exception for them?
Yeah, if Friday happens to be on the, on the fourth, then it'd have two days over that weekend.
Did we talk about times too? Do any of the, do any of them have specific times?
No.
Does our noise ordinance?
This one does not, but you've been doing it.
Would our noise ordinance take care of it?
Well, the noise ordinance would apply, but enforcing it is problematical.
Still wanna define it though, wouldn't it?
No fireworks after ten P M.
On the night, I don't know. I think that on the fourth, July, I don't have a problem with it being later on the fourth.
Ten o'clock.
I understand, but if you're gonna get, we put it in there, put it at eleven, I'll make people outside just as much, either gotta work the next day, I don't know, ten, ten thirty, I'm just giving a time.
For a separate definition for the fourth itself?
The exception, July fourth can go till eleven o'clock?
Ten on all, all available days except the fourth, which is later somehow.
Eleven. I'd agree that at ten o'clock on July fourth, it's still fairly light out.
So we go ten o'clock on the other nine days and fourth to July go eleven?
Midnight.
Go eleven and midnight.
Eleven midnight.
You wanna give a time to at least shoot the fireworks?
Oh, I know, but let's say it's June whatever, you know, it's not near anything and you're just, bunch of guys get together on Wednesday and they're lighting up fireworks till eleven, you gotta work the next day? I'm just saying.
I like that eleven till midnight, or eleven and midnight.
That's fine, I don't, I don't feel strongly enough about it, sorry about it.
It's not a big deal.
I mean, we try, it's gonna be something.
I think it's, I personally think it's covered under the noise ordinance anyways, if it's a nuisance.
Bruce said you gotta have.
Somebody calls in and says, hey, they're keeping me up, I gotta be up at three o'clock in the morning, yeah, we'll go out and tell them to shut it down.
Right. But they could, I don't, I just figure under noise ordinance it should be covered.
So we'll make our own content and our own number, but something that looks like that seven three oh two, number one, and then add the exception for the sixth that fourth is a Friday.
And I'd go ahead and add all these, wouldn't you? I mean, from three oh one through three oh two?
Well, I think we probably got a couple of them. I can translate, I can, you could get off the code, but the gen, the generic part of it, I think we have most of that, we just don't have the dates and times for firing them off, that's what's lacking.
So what is this next one?
I think we probably already got.
Fireworks for Thanksgiving.
We have turkeys exploding, those look good.
Okay, so concerned, according to those notes, the ordinance, next one?
They did.
That's all right.
Yes, sounds good. Anything more you've got to report on, Bruce?
No, basically we got the monthly in front of you.
Huge uptick in warnings.
Are you?
Huge uptick in warnings.
For some reason, like the last six weeks, we really haven't touched on it.
Like I said, I enjoyed when Tyler sat in the fire station before I came on, reminded everyone with the speech.
Because everybody asked me, what are you doing out there?
Just job.
Do something different.
How's the new car?
Wanna touch on that real quick? Through the budgetary process, I guess hopefully Mike explained it, I guess I wasn't here, but we were looking at picking up that third vehicle for the backup car and stuff. Had the opportunity, was approached by one of the county commissioners, kind of was told, you need to ask now, we want this thing out of here. We did pick up the, I stopped thinking, two thousand one, did I tell you?
That's what it is.
Not that old.
No, Dan's old car.
Yeah. Hey, the Ford Crown Victoria that's sitting over across the street, we had the opportunity to pick that up from the county, they shot a price, had us at a thousand dollars for the car, they said, you come get it, get it out of here. Had the opportunity to go out and pick it up, brought it up, had Mike look at it, touch base with the mayor, had the opportunity, ran across Joey, said, well, may as well talk to him about two thousand dollars, a hundred and thirty thousand miles on it. So we went ahead and kind of made the agreement, we're gonna pick this up next county meeting, county board meeting, Mike and I will be down there to purchase it from him, I guess be the way to hand him the check. Also through the process, was going to need some equipment for it, talked to Sheriff Everard, he had a light bar, center council mount that he threw in on the package, he said he wanted two hundred dollars for that, heck of a good deal, I mean, light bar goes for about eighteen hundred, two thousand dollars, so saved a bunch of money there. Was able to contact Faith Peterson through the Homeland Security, picked up a mobile radio for the car and handheld for Officer Wells at no cost to us. We had never requested funds from her, she was tickled, she said, I'll help you out while I can. So she paid for the radios, she paid for the install. So basically, right now, we're sitting on top of, we got twelve hundred dollars in the vehicle, and it'll be equipped, basically.
What do we budget for that?
Five thousand.
So, I mean, we're, we're way under, tires aren't as good as I kinda hoped for, so we might be looking to put some new tires on the car.
Now, explain the plan for this third car, and it is for what? Explain this.
Basically, what this is for is just, it's, it's going to be used as a shuttle vehicle for type D, but when we have things going on in town where all three of us are out, instead of having to either double up in a vehicle or use a personal vehicle, we have a third vehicle, so.
Where'll it be stored?
Probably be with Tyler, Officer Wells.
Okay.
And then when he goes on duty, he'll go after one of the good vehicles.
Okay.
I'm not going to equip it with an in-car video, four radar in this car. It's just the radio, light bar, stuff like that.
Anything further?
That's the end of the formal report, I've got a question for some guidance on a dog situation that came up last month. Officer Newman brought me a report, the twenty eighth or twenty ninth, indicating that he had been advised by Chief Yostin to contact some people about a dog attack. He brought, at the end of the occurrence was on October tenth, or maybe the day before, I guess, I have a little hard time making it out from the report. He last talked to the people on October twenty eighth and twenty ninth and brought this to me and asked what steps to take on this case. No ticket had been issued, no action had been taken. So, odd way to proceed, but I spent some time on it. I wrote a memo back to Officer Newman, I have a copy here for you, and I gave it to him. I finished it on the thirtieth of October, which took me an hour or something, hour or two. Officer Newman had brought me the code on dangerous dogs, I went through how that would be managed, license and vaccination issues, checking as to whether the dog was actually sicked on another dog, apparently it wasn't, that there could be a citation for running at large, that there could be something about injury of property of another person, and there could be a vet bill, suggested what I thought should be done. Like I said, on a dog case, a strange and awfully lengthy and formal way to proceed, but I did that because it was asked of me. Now, as recently as the seventh of November and the eleventh of November, I have been contacted by the individuals telling me that the officer was back to them and telling them there was really nothing could be done and they should call me if they had any questions. And I put in a call with the city to have Officer Newman get hold of me and was told he wasn't working until Wednesday this week.
Correct.
Well, it's already been over a month for a dog attack case, and this just seems to be, to be an awfully strange way to proceed. I guess I want some guidance from the city council, do you want me to research and advise the police department on how to proceed before a ticket is even issued on a dog case? And here we sit, a month down the road and still apparently nothing, although I have not talked to Officer Newman and I don't know if the chief has anything further to tell you about what's been done, if anything. I was unwilling to talk to the people further without talking to Officer Newman, so I told him, I'm not telling you anything else or doing anything until I talk to Officer Newman because he investigated. But now we're sitting a month down the road, apparently this dog was chewed up to the point that it had to go to the vet and there was an eighty dollar vet bill. The woman told me on the phone when she called up and screamed at me that the attacking dog was also on her porch, barking at her screen door, trying to get in, and she wants something done. But it's really not my place to go out and investigate these things and write these people up. I am somewhat at a loss at this point.
Yeah, I think we've got a three man police department now, it's kind of their job to investigate those things. Bruce, do you have a side to this or some information you can give us?
Officer Newman went out and contacted these people. The reason I requested he contact them, I tried to contact them through the course and they could not find them, so when he came on duty that night, I just told him to look for them. He had contact with them, he ordered them to get the dog out of town, he deemed the dog vicious. If the dog's gonna be out running around and attacked another dog, we don't need that.
Correct.
She in turn claims that for psychological reasons, I guess would be a way to put it, this dog is therapeutic to her. She claims she can get her doctor to sign the forms stating she needs this dog for her therapy. Officer Newman requested, she get that. Otherwise, he'd give her basically till the weekend, get rid of the dog, find a home for it, do something. He was told she got rid of the dog, he stopped at the house to double check it, as he's standing at the door, he can hear the dog in the basement barking. What do we do next? Do we go back every single day and cite them for harboring a vicious dog?
Yeah.
Or, you know, what do we do? That's what we are looking for, for the question to be answered. If she does come forward with this and the doctor says, yes, this is her therapeutic dog, she needs to have this, what's our next step? What do we do?
Well, that's completely different though than.
But I think that was all stated in jury.
Therapeutic dogs don't poorly attack other dogs.
Well, that's kind of my thing to do.
And I think it's a little V F, honestly. I think you cite her every day, a couple of dogs gone, or if you see her running out, I think you should take her, better shoot it. And if it's gonna attack a kid next, what do we do?
Well, you might wanna read what I put in the memo, but we have this fancy dangerous dog ordinance that says, we essentially have a first bite rule for an animal that attacks another animal. You have to go warn the people and write them up and tell them they have a potentially dangerous dog, and if it happens again, they're gonna be cited for that. But again, if you look through the memo, there's three or four other things that happened that clearly can be cited. You've got a dog that's running at large, you've got a dog that injured another person's property and caused a vet bill. I mean, it seems to me those are ticketable offenses and I'm just somewhat dumbfounded why I'm still in the game, until there's a citation issued and something needs to be done.
Yeah, I would agree that we need to ticket them, and then when she wants to play the therapeutic card, that would be when Mr. Curtis gets him on.
Well, Jerry comes back on duty tomorrow, we discussed it this weekend, he is probably going to issue for sure a ticket for dog at large. But with the options, what the city ordinance states, if they pin this dog up, they keep it. Because of the, you know, basically, this is the first time it's happened.
Right, but we need to have a written, you know, written warning telling them that.
And that's, that's what we're concerned about, is if we have dogs running around and they get out of the house and they go attack somebody or something, oh, that's okay? They attack it one time?
Somebody, that's a different matter. They attack a human, they're not potentially dangerous, they're dangerous, that's the end of the story. If they attack another animal, the fancy code propounded by Peter or whoever said, don't kill them on the first bite, go give them a warning and tell them you have a potentially dangerous dog, and if it causes trouble. But this is all laid out very clearly in the code, and I went over it and blinked in this memo. I mean, I don't really feel like I should be spending four or five hours getting a dog citation in place.
No, they're not asking you to get a dog citation placed, he was asking you for your opinion on actually which avenue to go on. Should, should we force this, this individual to get rid of this dog?
I gave you that in the memo. So now he's told the people, so they've told me, well, we don't know what we're gonna do, you just call Curtis, and now they're calling me.
The people with the dog or the people that had the dog?
People with the injured dog have been calling me.
Okay.
That I told them that nothing can be done essentially, and what are you doing here? Well, it's up to the council's direction and our, the council and the administrator, however you're gonna go at this, but I'm not gonna keep researching this and writing more memos until a citation is issued.
Oh, you got your info, you know what you're doing.
I think, I think tomorrow it's gonna be taken care of as far as what, you know, the reply that Jerry received.
Leasing him with the dog at large, give him the warning.
Well, not only the dog at large, but that six dash one one two where it caused injury to the personal property of another person, in this case the vet bill.
Yeah, they should be responsible for that, they, she, she's already been informed. She's responsible for that and the statements already made, they would pay that.
It was a hurt to have it riding though, you know what I'm saying?
And he's got a copy of it, and I believe he took it to her duties, and here you go, a vet bill.
Document, document, document.
Let us know what happens.
Let us know what happened. Don't use a pit bull.
Which council member, should I refer the continuing calls to?
Well, you shouldn't get any more calls unless they, well, the.
Well, the biggest thing is they're not happy, because what jury's telling them, so they're reaching out.
Well, make sure Jerry's choosing his words carefully. And it makes it sound like.
Yeah, and not recommend a call the city attorney.
Well, and, and the problem is too, is that when you try to explain to someone, somebody, are you hearing every word you're saying?
Probably not.
Well, Jerry should not have been, like, to call Bruce either.
Well, I, no, he did, I guess it wasn't mentioned to me, I can't say I wasn't there. So, but that will be, we'll discuss it.
I, I talked to the people that is involved tonight, they was gonna come here to the city council, but they didn't think anything would get accomplished.
Which people? The people that own the vicious dog or?
No, the people that, the dog got bit. He's a good friend of mine, and I talked to him on the phone, he said they was, him and his wife was gonna come, but they didn't think anything would get accomplished, I told them they should come and put in their views, I said, I said, the city council and the police, I said, the sensible people, I said, you explain what's going on, because their dog was attacked on their property. So, I mean, but I, when I talked to him, he said they were thinking about it, but they changed their minds and they didn't think anything would get accomplished.
Well, it's being handled. Anything else for Bruce?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, just give you a brief report before we get into discussion on the L B eight forty. Been in contact with Jamie Aaron's of the Northeast Nebraska Development District on a new housing construction program that was in their online newsletter. The loan program is available to a developer or a general contractor for zero percent interest up to a hundred thousand dollars to construct a single family unit and pay back when the home is sold. The contractor, now here's, here's the catcher, this wasn't in the newsletter, by the way, after I called them, the contractor has to have a home buyer in place before even getting started, and the buyer has to have a lender in place for the balance of the funds he needs. So when you read these news items that come out in the, in the news, in the paper, wherever you might see it, North York Daily or any source, sounds great, sound like a great deal, I called them right away, said this is something we wanna look at, but then you find the little catches behind the program. It's still out there and certainly could be done, but just not as easily as it's made sound in the news items. Spent some considerable time working on a farm type real estate store or retail store, did personally met with the store owner, who I've been talking to and contacted for about a year now. He gave us a lot of consideration on locating here, had me try, and I did find a suitable location for a lease, which was a lesson, is cash out late. The terms of the lease did not appeal to him, he did decide not to locate here at this time due to other expansions that he had made and wanted to see the results of those expansions. Did say, didn't shut the door, but did say it may be possible in the future when that commitment is made, so it's kind of big, we just stay in contact with and continue work with it. Knowing that, went back home, made another present to another farm store type business, but do not have any definite interest or reply from them at this time. So if one don't work, we try another, and if the second one don't work, we try another, and we just continue on to see if we can get some success. Sometimes it's a long step process, we'll stay at it. Also completed a building and site information form, which considers several pages on site number building out here, from everything from the size of the doors and the windows to the sewer lines, to the water lines, to the power, you name it, the whole thing. In order, in order, I did this in order to get it listed on the website of Nebraska Economic Development, State Nebraska Economic Development, also the Northeast Nebraska Economic Development District. It just made it on there today, by the way, a couple of weeks and found out that it just got on today.
Did you get a chance to take a look at it?
I tried to get onto it tonight, I wasn't finding it, although I was told it was there. I don't, did you get, see it? Jerry Neemawner of L B N's handling this transaction. I did put a potential industry candidate in touch with him, Neemawners, but that did not progress like I thought it would, that looked real good out of the gate and then it kind of died. So the building is still for sale or leased, given way, it should be listed on the website. So that we're at least in progress now to try and get something done, you know, any, any potential candidates for this thing, that anyone thinks of or knows of, like, let me know or let the Neemawners know, because they do wanna do something with it and they don't wanna sit with it for a long time. let me know or, or let the Neimorers know, 'cause they do wanna do something with it and they don't wanna sit with it for a long time. So I think it's somewhat negotiable and probably could be, uh, probably could be sold or leased fairly reasonable at least, 'cause they don't wanna sit and hold it. I've had some additional contact with a couple who are working to become the restaurant operators at the Legion. They're still working their process for the business plan and loan application. I said they're making some progress, a kind of slow progress too. The business plan was, has not completed and was ready for review, review by the Nebraska Business Development Center. They thought they had to go back and make sure that they had it done right before they completed their loan application to go in. And I did talk again with Dick Gani on the Cornhusker Motor Watson property out here, just keeping in contact with him. Doesn't seem like there's any definite plans in his, in his mind to do with that, but anyway, we're keeping in contact right now, so he's back, as you know. I attended the First County County Development Meeting with the county board and also our, our Plainview Development Company. I've had contact with the Nebraska Community Foundation on a local meeting, supposedly to be at in late November. They still haven't given me a definite date on that. I guess I'm gonna have to keep prying a little bit 'cause time is, well. This is strictly a informative meeting, there's, no one's under any commitment to do anything. They explained their program, may not be what we wanna do, may, may be what we wanna do. Also indicated that, uh, even though we have five foundations in the community, if, if, uh, one or two of them wanted to be involved in the Nebraska Community Foundation, they could do that without the whole group coming in. But they would at least like to talk to the whole group so they know what they have to offer. So that is still pending out there. I guess another thing I'd just like to mention, I encourage, I hope the movement with the library plans move on. I think that's a, an excellent improvement for the City of Plainview. So I encourage that to, to progress. Hopefully we'll see some result in not too distant future. Uh, have focused somewhat on getting the LB eighty forty plan ready for presenting to the council, so the required steps can be taken to adopt the program. Program is being reviewed and fine tuned now, which is probably with Mike and maybe even Bruce's work done, I'm not sure, but, but going in. This program would give some real flexibility in how economic development funds can be properly used on local projects. Right now, we are pretty much restricted or inhibited in how we handle any funds for economic development. This would give us a lot better flexibility and projects for our community could be realized. So I guess a strong urge for their action to take steps to accomplish this. I guess I just wanna point out too, that when this is adopted, of course, or the meetings held, public hearing, if it's adopted, uh, in the steps, you have to have a certification through the county clerk for the primary election next spring. Fifty days prior to the election, so that puts it back into March. We're already in November, right? So we've got December, January, February.
What needs to be done in that time?
Well, we need to have the public hearing, we need to approve the program, of course, and have a public hearing.
There's a couple of things that need to be done. Bruce and I did talk about this briefly, it's not at any means prepared to come any action tonight, nor would it be. There's gotta be some public input. The main thing is the council has to somewhat sign off and take a look at the plan itself before we proceed to go any further. It's gonna have to have both the hearing and the council sign off. And then we'll put it up for the, uh, the election if it's the main primary, which is what we're shooting for. So December and January are the months you'll be looking at to do any kind of action. But before that, Bruce and Roger need to sit down and put together some of the language. And, and right now I'm revising what Roger has in print and I've, I've got Roger's draft copy with me, if anybody wants to see and take a look at it. But it's got, it's got a ways to go, I mean, it's not just a
When do we expect that to be done?
December, you should get a rough draft, I would say by January, you need to make the approval. And in the same time, we can coincide, I think Bruce, the public hearing is, if you recall, I got to look at the, you know, the public hearing go about the same time or does it need to go after the council? Which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
I put all that in that LB eight forty material I have given you.
And I, and I've certainly
It says, it says in the LB eight forty, some of this is crafted by our own, our own, our own words, our own input. A lot of LB eight forty is mandated by the law itself. So we can't change that language, I mean, that's, that's mandated. It says, "The governing body of the city shall schedule a public hearing at which such plan shall be presented for public comment and discussion." Following the public hearing, the government shall adopt their full, full plan and any amendments by resolution.
Public hearing.
So you can do it right, right after the public hearing, if you want to.
We should still get a draft next month.
Oh yeah, you still got, you still want to know what's in it.
You know, and part of the, uh,
It's really important to keep this on track.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, time will get away from us fairly easy.
Part of the difficulty, and it's not difficult law, it's just that if you craft the language, there are provisions that, as you look at it, that are mandatory, as Roger was saying, through the state statutes. But other parts of it, and I think Bruce actually said it best at one of the last meetings, to keep in mind, I think the intent, what we want to do is the money's in place, we want the language somehow to read to the extent of all the possible usages of the money, uh, to the extent of the law, is what we intend. Now with that in mind, if we want to do, for example, I won't belabor it because it's not tonight, but we should do it. But for example, if we wanna do any kind of economic development loan program, which I think there should be a loan provision in there that deals out microloans and stuff to the public for business uses, that has to be spelled out almost in a document form, such as Ruip has with the Center for Rural Affairs. It has to be fairly specific.
Have a lot more funding if you're gonna do loans.
It would have to start off and then be the microloan, and it may not even get off the floor, but you gotta have it in language, otherwise it's game.
You can give some guidance here, in drafting the plan, it's all in that memo that I had some time back. You can have a business and economic development loan program or grant program. You can have a low income housing or construction or rehabilitation, sale or lease program. You gotta set down all the criteria for how you're gonna do those. You can have a land purchase for economic development plan program, that was the impetus of thinking about this in the first place. And all the criteria procedures for that. But there's, there's three separate types of programs. If you wanna know more, you're talking about a fairly complex document here.
And you guys are talking about all three, 'cause I would think the first and the third suffice us, because we really already have the other one.
Housing tax.
But I think if we put this in place, we need to have, I mean, doesn't that, we can put in there with approval of the city council, things like that, so.
No, but
Well, you can, but, but you've got to establish all
I understand, but we do this, and then we go back on it, I wish we did that. We better do it right the first time.
Well, it's not not doing it right, it's just not including.
And I understand we got the CD.
And I understand everything, part of the, the, you know, what you're saying is
I'm just asking, I, I don't
No, and I think we're gonna actually probably need your help as much as anyone's, but as far as the microloan program, the criteria
No, I was talking about with the housing.
And the housing, and that's already in the draft that Roger, Roger's draft is actually fairly complete.
Do you kinda intend to include all of the above in?
All are in there.
They are all in there.
And you can, and you don't have to use them all.
Yeah, they're there.
But it means for a complex And then you've got to settle on the final draft, if you're gonna have a resolution and content and everything available for a hearing in December.
Yeah, no, a hearing will not be December, it will be
Right, January.
The following month, January.
And at that point, we prove it, is my hope, that that is your fifty days plus to do this.
Pretty close to run your time. I mean, you gotta have the resolution, you gotta have the whole plan passed. And at that, in that resolution, you'll see in the memo, you've got to include the full text of the plan and pick the date for the election and pick the language of the ballot question.
Yes.
Uh, you've either got a plan to spend a strong hour on it next month or have a special meeting or something, because this is not a fine minute to go through all this stuff.
And I agree, and I think you hit that on the head, I never, you know, I hate to do this to you, but I never plan to miss this. It is something you can't probably want to handle in a regular council, you may need a special meeting. And if it's for the LB eight forty, I think it's well worth it.
No, I have no problem with a special meeting, but do are you guys gonna be time, meeting ahead of time, getting this thing hammered out, giving us a draft? Do we wanna invent a special meeting? Do we have a special meeting to review the draft and then just approve it at a council meeting, which is written, what do we wanna do?
I think, you know, in the steps that I've outlined in my head, you need to see the draft in December, just the draft. Don't worry about anything, you need to go over and just read it and then come back in January with a special meeting.
Prior to this meeting?
Prior to the January, the second Tuesday meeting, whether it's, it's even the Friday before or the Thursday before, I, it doesn't really matter to me. I, I don't wanna start planning that yet till we see the, the plans in December.
When is the second Tuesday?
'Cause you're gonna wanna plan the public hearing at the same time.
Just so we know what it is.
And in all fairness, and in all fairness, even though the time is cutting short and you wanna get into the language and work with Bruce on this, if you take the fifty day window
Well, this is the quarter you guys are gonna have the draft, we can all get together then for a special meeting.
But as, what I'm trying to say is, what Roger said was true, even though we're pushing the window, um, January is sufficient, you actually can do it in February. And you could actually push it up until March. We do not need to do
I don't want to
'Cause you have a fifty day window and you have to have everything hashed out. But if something should not be what you think it should be in January, you do have that option to back off and start to include more, we need more and get it done.
Well, we'll have the draft by December.
December is the draft.
And then can we put on the agenda for next December, for this December, uh, setting time for special meeting, January, first week of January? I'd assume a Thursday would probably work, I don't know what works for everyone here, but.
The program, as I'm looking at it right now, with the microloan program is through
May one, I guess.
And the construction housing program
I think it's the fourteen.
Which is Northeast Housing And they've done a lot
The arcane market.
Yeah, nice plan that would work well in LB eight forty.
It is. I, I would, I would see it work as much as possible.
I do too.
Maybe that's what I said, I can make a amendment to it and change it or, oh, okay.
That concludes my report.
Um, questions? Yeah, I'm sorry. Uh, I read, what is it, that Mean, is that the one that sets out the newsletter to us or who sent out that?
Yes, yes, he probably did that booklet, it's Mean.
They have something in there about a State Nebraska Economic Development Summit or something like that going on in Lincoln in December.
December twelve.
Yeah, I believe you're right, December.
Yeah, Roger, are you gonna go to that?
I'm not aware of it yet.
He is now.
Roger also, I would, probably am. I would love to see you go to that, I saw that and I wanted to make a note.
Yeah, I'm already registered.
December twelve?
Yeah. It's in Lincoln from nine to one at the state capitol. And like I said, I got a lady for you to contact there.
Okay. Okay.
Typically, if you do that, it might not be a bad idea, um, now we don't have it in the agenda. As a consensus, without having, you know, I don't think you need action, but as a consensus of the council, you're recommending him to go, correct?
I would like to see you go. I don't
Okay. Hey, thank you.
Uh, next time we turn on here, discussion action on intern development.
Jason, I brought this to my attention, and this is actually going full scale, I talked to
Shouldn't we wait till we get the LB eight forty funding for it?
Um, LB eight forty funding wouldn't cover this, this would actually
About what?
It, it, it's already covered because as an intern, it's not part of a program to be part of employment, and that's already covered in the state statute of the sales tax. We can use it for employment intern. You don't need to have like a special LB eight forty. Yeah, I'll just back up and tell you what's gone so far. The program is under cat tracks and I talked to, is it January? Anyway, the gal that's over there, she is very, very helpful and we actually started to put it down. She has this in the system and she is down going to specialize with the political science department, particularly Joe Duncan and all, to, uh, look at the, they have to see it on site and they will do that in the month of December. Uh, and that is when, basically, it's gonna go live and they'll be able to take a look at it for the next semester and start making some options. The intern programs are, um, very useful and it seems like they do a good job over there. But they will take a look at the, uh, program itself and they will go through an interview process, which can be done through the council, however you want. I think it would be a good idea to have a, a young man or a young lady come over here and go through the process. It's as much of a learning experience for them as it is for us to have.
Excellent.
It is in place, we are now adopting it with Wayne State College and we are just trying to, and that's all there is to it.
Excellent. So we'll hear, will we have candidates? Or just?
Me, I, I'm gonna say
I'll bet it's January.
I'll bet it's January when they come back into the class.
But they'll already have a schedule set up or anything.
But some of them are gonna be in that search process of an internship or an intern
Whatever works. Whatever works. But it's already in cat tracks, huh?
Yeah.
And we, did we put in there what we expect to, to pay someone?
This is part of the, uh, the process right now and you can go, actually, what she said is you can go any way you want. They're actually unpaid, uh, internships that are sought after as well. Part of the discussion we could have right now is if what your thoughts are in determining, before we even talk to a candidate, who's interested in the internship program. All along, I had set up the budget to pay. And I had a minimum wage at eight dollars an hour, I believe is where I was at, for, I mean, ten, fifteen hours a week. It's budgeted in our budget.
I think if we made it paid, we get a higher quality, a higher caliber of candidates. And then, once you make the internship somewhat a sought after thing and establish it, I think it'll benefit us greatly to have something like that. Minimum wage is fine, I would like to see ten dollars an hour personally. That's just me, I mean, for ten
Not for an interim.
Ten, fifteen dollars, ten, ten, fifteen hours of
I, I think the majority, and I understand where you're coming from, I think that their value is probably worth that, but I think the, just having four children over there, and as you remember, not too many years ago, I think they all get paid about eight. It seems to be the going rate across for just about
Paying minimum wage for an internship is, 'cause a lot of internships are unpaid.
Yes, and, and she did say that, you know, but I think that Jason's right, that, uh, you know, the intent was probably paid, so. That's the direction I'm heading right.
How is this person willing to exist while working in Plainview, Nebraska? Are they going to drive from Wayne every day?
No, in fact, that was discussed, there's questions.
Your, your commuting costs will exceed your wages.
Right, and, and part of this will be very much because of the research and what we want done. Uh, the number of hours that have to be under research and then possibly a once a week or once every two weeks come to Plainview. But in the meantime, it would be a daily, uh, you know, turn in of a different research, so.
I think personally, if we are going to do the intern thing, they should do a report just like Roger does.
Yep.
Because that just helps us and it will help them to know, so.
The first, I tell you, the, in my mind, what the first
We're talking about ten hours a week, so we're not talking about
We're not talking huge.
Coming over every day.
No, I guess that's what I'm asking you.
No, it was a good question.
The office are gonna have to drive two days to get here.
This is the fine tune that's going in right now is this, Jenny, I think is certainly, she's
Certainly the Jenny.
She's very sweet. Um, but we talked about the, uh, the different ways that they could actually do this internship and the, and the way it would work. And, and I can tell you what the vision that I have for Roger, and one of the things that we need to do on a window, limited window basis, is we need two CDVG grants and the cycle's coming around February and March. And that's a, a huge grant that needs a lot of research and a lot of paperwork and things put together. And have an intern helping that would be great, 'cause the, the, the application itself is gonna be well over two, three hundred pages. That's just a CDVG, that's just the way they work, and we're looking at waterworks, we're looking at all the different programs. Even from a community development, from the building standpoints, if we wanna do something with, uh, this construction program, so.
Probably gonna need to get actual description of job duties and things like that in next week's meeting, next meeting, just so everyone's on the same page, so. If you could, please.
Let's see, uh, discuss
Let's see, uh, discussion of, or action on the claim for Pierce County Economic Development for dues?
You have that in front of you, and I apologize when the computer's being hooked up. No, I do not spell membership, and I do not spell P C E D, but there was some communication things, but the program itself is very, I mean, the dollars are there, and that is correct, um, to belong with the P C E D. Uh, I think it's been a valuable program. The majority of this board has been, uh, active. I know that June is also very active with Elkhorn Valley, so we've got a, a group of, from the economic development standpoint that understands this. And Bob's done a lot of work with the bylaws. Joe, of course, is an executive director on it now. Jason's been very involved with economic development. It's a good program. It's been doing, um, absolutely what it's set out to do. They've got a plan of action. We've met with the county. We've also looked at the, the potential of what we need to get done. Um, Joe, I believe you can answer more as an executive director, but I know from our standpoint, having Plainview's presence on the county, it only adds to what we can do. And right now, the county is very, very active with a lot of program from CVA, right on the outside of, um, eighty-one and twenty, to Pierce's development, from our development.
It's key to know that the county has got no federal funding or no federal grants in the last three years.
And, okay, so what is your, do you have a, a generic plan you can give us? I mean, I know sometimes you can't tell who's going...
Not really, because what they need is an R C, which is a person that actually administers the grants. And until they get that position filled in Pierce, we can't even apply for the federal.
Can you get that certification? Are you going to try?
Can, yeah. And we're talking to them about it, but it's, it's not a cat track. It's more like a turtle trap.
Well...
I do know the direction that we're going as a board, is given Joe, uh, just to let you know at the last couple of board meetings, is to give Joe the full rein to go fast forward. He's been in, uh, somewhat taken from a part-time to go to more full-time hours, and, and basically use the money and get us to a point where we wanna be. And hopefully, at that point, if we do run short of the county money and the city money, say, nine months into the season, the county has somewhat, and I say that nicely, but somewhat assured that they would be there to help us out. And as of this point, I have no reason to doubt them, so they would...
So you're saying there's a chance?
There's a chance. I'm just not gonna be a prognosticator. Uh, the strategic plans are in place. We're gonna be doing that in the next couple of months. Uh, website's being developed and being worked on for P C E D.
Same ways it's doing the, uh, city website here.
Okay.
So there'll be some integration between the two.
Okay. Well, there's no further discussion. I'll make a motion to pay the claim for Pierce County Economic Development.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion made and seconded, seconded to approve that claim from Pierce County Economic Development. Judy?
Aye.
Yo.
May I still abstain? Have a pass? I abstain.
Okay, okay.
Uh, yes, aye.
So I take it that carries?
Needs the mo, oh, the need of the majority, long ago, four, right?
Yeah. Uh, number six, action on refinancing the water bonds. Motion to adopt resolution four ninety-seven?
Bob, Bill Apps is here. Thank you, John. Did we have any questions?
Good evening. I'm Bill Apps, as a merit, but I'm up there for John Truzy, and, uh, he had a good old wall, and it's a lot further than it was in Plainview. Anyway, um, we pass it. Now, for you, the... Nebraska has a state statute that requires that all bonds be callable after five years by issuing bodies destruction. And you're currently paying three thirty out to four fifty, like the two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar balance. And what we would do is reduce that from a half a percent out to two fifty-five, saving you about twenty-four thousand in interest costs over the remaining life of the issue. Uh, it's very commonly done, uh, procedurally. It's a call resolution, calling the bonds, and then just an ordinance reissuing the new bonds, and all this takes place in one day, and money all flies around in cyberspace and it's done, so.
So, uh, resolution four ninety-seven, is the first one?
Yep. I'll make a motion to approve four ninety-seven.
I'll second it.
All right, motion made and seconded to approve that four ninety-seven, which is a call resolution for the outstanding bond.
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
I guess we've got that done. That's what we need to do as far as...
We're all dead now. Now we gotta get back in.
Probably, we're probably...
Unless you got a lot of cash on there.
People that turned in their bonds might want their money. Yeah, you could consider that possibility anyhow.
We, we, we're in Plainview, how many?
Make a motion to adopt ordinance nine one four.
All right, motion made, is there a second?
There's not a percent rate on page eight.
Got the draft, and so there's length for interest rates all across the board.
Yeah, I, I brought up the final copy of that.
Yeah, that's not in the packet, though. You say that overall savings from payment schedules about twenty-four thousand, though.
Twenty-four thousand. That present value is about twenty-three, uh, about maybe twenty-four, three percent of the outstanding bonds.
So the new interest rate is that sliding scale with the half to up to two five five?
Right, and the old one's...
Used to be three three up to four five, and now they're half up to two five five?
Right.
I understand that's where the savings comes from.
That's, and that's our all issues cost.
Uh, motion made and seconded into...
Sorry, nine fourteen.
Yeah, to adopt nine fourteen. Judy?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
All right, motion carried. Uh... Does that one need to waive the second?
Yeah, that's an ordinance.
We'll make a motion to waive the second and third reading, ordinance nine one four.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to waive the second and third readings of the ordinance nine one four. Judy?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Do we need those on four ninety-seven, too?
So that is, we have done, I guess.
Yeah, we're, we're, um...
With eight o'clock?
Fairly, fairly simple to see.
Right, on time.
Yeah, way to go, Karen.
Thanks, Bill. And I was gonna say, you gotta get that back.
Joey's in charge now.
Okay, I'll get that to him personally in the morning after I get Bob assigned.
Right.
And the rest of it on the screen.
It's all, it was CDV, the worst. Because we have to give that to the state on about thirty days ahead of month.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, and, and, uh, have a happy holiday season.
Safe trip back.
Safe, um...
No fear.
Yeah, be careful, that's very careful.
Well, I guess, what do we do now here? Call to order the eight o'clock...
Actually, if you'll do this, just, there'll be no public hearing tonight. Bruce and I met on Friday to discuss this, allowing the accessory building a special use permit. Um, Bruce will have some probably paperwork here for you, but it would be good to get the input before the recommendation, um, you'd know, you, well, let me back up. First of all, you know, the recommendation's been given to you by the zoning, uh, planning and zoning board. So, and they told you, uh, basically what was involved. Bruce and I discussed a couple of things that probably should be added, and with your discussion here, we can talk about the accessory building, uh, ordinance.
Still have, kind of like fireworks with, you know, structures to do this, but who gets to decide? Well, read this over and decide what you truly wanted to say. Your, your recommendation from the planning commission is somewhat vague, if you will. Uh, they did not have content typed up in detail, so we've created something that seems to be close, but it's a three-part system, as we envisioned it and discussed it the other day. If you recall, I said first you'd have to do something with the amendment of what an accessory structure can be. Right now, it says that it has to be on the same site as the principal user building. In that section one, the first sentence is essentially what you have now. A structure that is, number one, incidental or associated with the principal usance on the same site. So the fix for that, or to open it up, would be to add number two. Or on a separate site, not having the owner occupied principal user building with a special use permit as provided in. I mean, that would open up the possibility of accessory buildings on unconnected sites. I mean, that just expands the definition to do that. The second thing I think you would need to do is add this to the criteria that the planning commission would consider and that you would consider in whether or not you give a special use permit. In your code, you've got a whole page of criteria. Think about all these things, and it's kind of a checklist. In fact, I suggested to Mike that, uh, given the planning commission's normal tendency toward minimal paperwork, maybe he should type it up as a checklist, and if they have to consider a special use permit, present it to them.
I think that's a great idea.
And say, discuss all this stuff and answer the questions yes or no, and then you could be given a copy of that as to what they're thinking. But in addition to the things that are listed, and there are a dozen of them now, Mike and I talked about a variety of other possible tests, and he's kind of a proponent of having the adjoining property owners agree. And I'm okay with that, but I don't think you ought to have a one have a veto power. What we got there for a suggestion for you as a criteria is have at least seventy-five percent of the adjoining property owners receive the copy of the application, knowing what's meant to be built, that is, and consented to the proposed structure, right? If no, it should be denied. Now, that's totally a judgment call. Do you wanna let adjoining property owners vote at all?
Here's, here's the...
What do you wanna do?
Behind this, and, and I gotta tell you, Bruce was more lenient than I was, uh, even though I've been a proponent for this all along. But I know that this is a, a, a leap of faith into allowing a structure into an area that's just open, and you could appropriate the, the town with these structures, and if you don't want that to happen, my reasoning and my thinking was, let's say if you were in a middle area with a lot with four neighbors, and you're not always gonna have that, but four neighbors, if you have a neighbor that says no, and you have three of them that say yes, I felt that that one neighbor is significant enough to possibly reconsider or relook at this, um, lot, no matter what. And, and that would be enough to veto, but on the other...
Well, that wouldn't be enough to veto. It'd be enough to look at it again, but if two of the four said no, that would be...
This, this says if it's less than five percent, then cannot do it. You can still... Less than seventy-five percent. If it's over that, you still don't have to.
Right.
But if most of the neighbors don't agree, you cannot. That's the way it's working right now. Now, the other possible way to go with that test, this is adjoining property owners. Do you, would you wanna make it a distance setback? Anybody having a residence within a hundred and fifty feet of the building?
Across the street is not adjacent, right?
Exactly.
Exactly.
You want people cross the street to...
So maybe you want it, whose residence is located within a hundred and fifty feet of the proposed structure, or something, rather than adjoining? That's, again, a judgment call, but, uh, where, where do you wanna take that? Well, anytime you have a neighbor voting against...
Across the street. I like that.
Or as Bruce suggested, which I don't think is a bad idea at all, uh, a setback footage. I mean, basically, any neighbor within, you know, look at your lot size, block size, and...
It's gonna get a lot harder to figure out, though.
Who's going to approve this special permit? The zoning board?
This is a recommendation from the planning commission to the council. The council will consider every one.
And I, I wanna see the checklist, though, attached to this.
And it could not attach, but attach one...
And the checklist, well, okay, and, and that's, that's fair enough, and you'll see it, but the checklist, if you go, and I'm just having you do it, just to take a good look at it, is you look at the table, you go into a zoning book, and the checklist will be item by item by item. What's that?
Which we store.
I brought one just in case.
I have one.
Yep.
You got it there. I got it handy. I mean, the, the purpose that I suggested to Mike for the checklist is, if you don't present your planning commission checklist, they're never gonna put all this in there.
Right.
Never, ever. But if they could say they...
But if they have a, you know, a list that they have listed criteria.
Basically, what it is on the table is...
And it's well done.
It is, well, it is, you know, without these, there's no consideration. These are absolute...
Is the criteria is, think about these things and make a ruling.
Perfect.
Yes or no.
Perfect.
You know, is it compatible? Does it fit? Is there water? Is there sewer? Is it gonna work? All the way down the list, but to that, we would add consent of whoever, and should it be limited to a specific, specific owner or specific term? I was gonna suggest to you, normally, if it's a building, they're gonna want it to be perpetual.
Right.
But, but it doesn't hurt to think about it. Does it make sense to limit it to a specific owner or a specific...
The zoning code itself is not, um, as detailed in the, the number of years or number of...
Try and get this one.
Months or whatever, so it has it basically, could be perpetual. If you, if you left it alone, it would be perpetual.
Well, I think, some, once someone puts up a structure, he should be able to sell his property with that structure on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that just says, you know, it should be considered.
You know, somebody's got a house in the storage shed, and they sell the house, they don't store the storage shed, and now you got an issue. As you back to that storage shed on a property that's not adjacent to his house.
Yeah, that, that's the sort of, we're not really addressing that question head on, yeah.
No, not if it was on a separate line.
But usually, you would not limit a building to a specific owner or a specific term. It's just asking that they should consider the possibility and say yes or no.
Okay.
Usually on a building, they would say no. If it's a, some other structure...
Correct.
Handball court that somebody needs for therapy, maybe so. I don't know. I mean, it's not impossible that you would have a situation where you'd wanna limit it to a specific owner or a specific term.
Yeah, we, we, you do have to broaden out to the accessory structure, so.
I have one question. Why, why would you consider letting them build these machine sheds in, how, in, in a residential area? We want, what, whatever brought this up for people, what do, what do you get with it?
What we're trying to do is stop some of the sheds that have gone up, skirting the actual ordinances that are in place now. So, but what we're trying to do is make it so it's black and white, so people can't skirt the issues anymore.
But they can still build them.
Well, only if it's, gets approved by the zoning board and by us.
Because I've, you know, I'm not in favor of it, because I don't want one by my house, and I'm sure a lot of people don't. And in driving around different places that we have been in the last several weeks, there are not many towns that have them.
Actually, it's just the opposite. A lot of these smaller towns, and I just did a thing for the administrators, in these smaller towns, it's, it's the economy and it's the type of life we're in right now, where we're seeing these small, one-bedroom structures that were good in the early nineteen hundreds are now being torn down, the dilapidated houses. What do you do with a twenty-five foot lot? We're not alone. Uh, Creighton addressed it in a different format, and a lot of other towns are trying to look at it. You are probably, um, creating something unique. Uh, I'm not saying reinvent, reinventing the wheel, but you're probably doing it that's, um, specific to Plainview. With, like Judy, if she doesn't want it, you would be a neighbor. I mean, you would absolutely be, if that's the case, you would probably be one of the neighbors that would object. And in a public hearing, you gotta go through two processes here. You gotta have a public hearing on a special use permit for the planning and zoning, and that's only for a recommendation. They can recommend it based on the checklist. If no neighbors objected, well, if there's already, if there's an objection, they're gonna consider that, and they may not even go any further. If it doesn't go any further, the council will never see it. It won't be recommended. If they decide to recommend it, and obviously in a public hearing before the council, if there's enough objection that comes forward, and this is two separate twenty-day, ten-day piece, uh, hearings, uh, then the council can say no at that point, that it's not a, it's not conducive, um, to... That it's not conducive to Plainview to have a machine shed out on Seventh Street that is fifty-foot high, a hundred and fifty-foot wide, and right in the middle of two residences. And I would tend to agree.
But that's what you're kind of talking about, is putting them in a residential area, when you were talking about last month, doing them south of Main or whatever street that is, on these smaller lots. Well, then you're building these machine sheds.
Once again, people can do that if it's on their adjacent property currently.
Yeah, I understand that.
Right, so what we're doing is trying to put more ordinances in for the rest of the town, so people can't buy an empty lot next to you and come do that without going through the two public meetings.
So, wait, if someone, say, bought the lot next to me and wanted to build one, are they going to be limited in their height and their size?
Yep.
I mean, some of these are huge, and, and yes, a lot of them are taken care of, but some of them turn into machine sheds and repair shops, and there's old refrigerators, there's tires, there's oil drums, all that sitting outside there, then what do you do?
All those are listed on that table as part of it. And obviously, we've got places that actually own their own, that we have problems with oil and the tubes and things that we've got to take care of that are legal. So we have enough to worry about that. But on the other hand, we have these empty lots that have, for example, we just tore down this Jack Smith house on Second Street. That lot is absolutely worthless to anyone unless they want to put a community garden in. Because you really can't do anything with it. You can't put a house on that.
Well, what would be wrong with just building an ordinary garage?
That would be, that would be an accessory, that's a structure.
That would be one of these.
Most of the time, the people, they don't want this garage, they want this big monstrosity that, you know, farmers usually use to do.
Well, hopefully, hopefully, you know, I, not to mention, I agree with you in the first place, but this has come up, so I've got to help define it. But hopefully, the council would be persuaded by discussion of the neighbors or whoever to limit the size. Now, you could limit it specifically. I mean, you could say there's special limits on something like this, these off-site special use permits. But basically, the code says the limits are far more than you might think. You can have like a thirty-five-foot height on a lot.
I think thirty-five is-
Which is enormous.
Yes.
But, you know, you could, you can limit them. And if you would limit them to something that looked like a residential structure, a two-car garage, well, it's not near so bad.
You're not entitled to, yeah, you're not entitled to, just because this was passed, and say, if I wanted to buy a piece of land down by Butch, and I wanted to go ahead and put up this machine shed to sit there and do something.
What?
I don't, I'm not entitled to it. So if I say I want to put up a metal machine shed thirty-five-foot high, the planning and zoning commission can stop it right there and say, no, you can only put up, this is what you're allowed to put up. And this will work with the neighbors, find out from your neighbors first. And then, at that point, we'll do a recommendation. They may turn right around and just say, no, no matter what, we don't want. So there's two levels. Plus the level that's the written, the checklist that they've talked about that won't- Because they're trying to prevent these Morton-style, whole, big sheds that all of a sudden popped up, you know, long before me. There's a couple of them that I don't know how they ever got put up.
There should be setbacks when you bound it. There are, there absolutely are, but I think we need to reduce the height on it, though, too.
In that, but in this situation Judy's brought up, we're talking about the one June Kraus's. That's sort of there, it's hidden, isn't it? I mean, he's using it, right?
He's buying it from the writers.
Right.
They already have it again.
So what do we do about that? And it's an ordinance, we can buy that, you know, ordinance.
Oh, no, no, it's post, I mean, it'd be, one of the things-
That was on there before this ordinance was put in place. Because I remember being on the zoning board, and we talked about that. And so the first thing we did, we talked about these pole sheds.
They don't want the rising.
And they said, it's, oh, okay, well.
Well, once an ordinance is placed, you can't go back and make people take down their stuff, what you can do is stop them.
Unless, right, the new ordinance would not affect that.
The newer, but the old, we didn't have, we didn't have an old one.
If you recall, I said in a meeting a couple of months ago, the city's primary control of something like the Kraus Building is a lot split. And then it was completed in a manner where there was no lot split. I take it, I guess I just saw what appeared in the paper, a whole lot.
Correct.
But nonetheless, it still did create, under the law and existence at the time, what I would call an improper condition of building on a non-adjacent property. But the city has no primary-
Well, it was adjacent to their property when they built it, because basically, the writing is still on it.
But you'll find in the zoning code language, it says you can't sell something that creates an illegal situation.
Then it takes it out of conformity.
But the point being, that, that, the way the transaction has been accomplished, the city didn't have any upfront review. You would have to go to court, the city would have to go to court, to do something active to contest the split off and the sale.
This allows us, before they build them now, to actually turn it around.
But on the other hand, if you're going to pass something like this, you're just spinning your wheels. I mean, you're going to try to allow them.
It's a slap in the face.
So, sure. Why?
And I think we should lock that personally, because I just, well, what, what's the point of doing this if we're not going to force it?
That's a separate question.
That is true.
We're digressing to that. Let me raise one other issue. I mean, you haven't settled the terms of number two, but look at number three. I mean, there's another huge decision to be had there. What zoning districts does this apply in? What zoning districts do you allow this to happen with special use permits?
This sort of goes back to what Judy's saying. Unfortunately, I think in Seventh Street, I may not be able to protect Judy on this one, but on the, as far as, you have R1, R2, R3, and R4, R4 being defunct. It's a, we don't have R4, that's the mobile home districts, and-
And what's 1, 2, and 3 respectively?
Well, if you look on here, blue, yellow, green, and green are the residential districts. So R1, R2, and R3, you can pick. That's out of your current book, and it's very hard to see, and the big map is not handy, but I brought that along.
What are we going to get, what are we going to put up on the wall, remember? Talk about a couple of these.
Do you guys know what we're going to, maybe we'll remodel when we decorate, remember I said we're going to do that?
You don't have to do that, also, it's a map.
We need a lot of stuff in here.
No, you know, all we need is a map and a shelf for textbooks.
Anyways, we were talking-
So you could make this special use permit available in any one of them or only one of them. Now, what we have in here is to add it to all the residential districts, that you can do this with a special use permit. If you don't like that, make it just the acreage-type area that's in blue up there up north, and just the stuff south of the highway, and leave out the middle of town. Or whatever you want, that's another judgment call, we don't get to pick.
You're going to run it to here.
The blue is what, that is-
That's a residential something. It's R1 or R2, it's R something. The print is so small at the bottom, you can't really make it out. I might have a clearer one in my book.
Let's just go right back to-
Where's the map, is it clear in the front or clear in the back? I don't deal with the maps.
I don't have a map.
It's single-family residential.
Yeah. It's about- It should be your R1.
Yeah, the stuff up-
This is R4, this is R3.
The blue is R3?
Yes.
And that might be your outline area.
And then so, the yellow is what?
R4.
We don't have R4.
See?
The majority of us-
I know what she's doing, it's, it's, they don't list it, nor do we.
R4 was mobile home, and that's kind of been done away with.
That was purple.
That's not the official map, the official map's over in the office. That's just a crude representation.
The easiest way to do it is think about you-
But it gives you an idea.
You're just trying to spot geographically, and I think more importantly-
No, I understand.
R1 is your single-home residential dwellings that I would consider. If you're in the R1 district, you try to hate class strata and that, but your R1s are your better homes. You're a single-family. When you get to R3, you get your multiple-family, you get some of them, this is the way it was done years and years ago, to, when they used to talk about south side of tracks and north side of tracks, and they used to have these zoning to only allow certain people in certain areas, that's long gone away. A lot of us belong in R3, which is the green, I believe. And green is the most prevalent.
R3 was the blue.
I do.
You can make it out if you take your bifocals off.
R-
No. I can't make Brooke out.
Well, I can if I take my bifocals off, if you want to give them back to me.
Okay.
Did you see it, you pretty sure what it said?
No, she doesn't know.
If you're going to know, if you're going to know that-
She gave up.
If you're going to go that direction, I would suggest, as the administrator, you would disallow R1. If that is what you-
If R1 is the middle that we're talking about, and R1's-
R1, it just, yeah, you, you know, R1 is your, your, your cul-de-sac, your whole area.
I'm not so sure that, well, let's see if Judy can translate or give it back to me. But the blue up in the north part of College District is where you would expect these to be sensible, I would think.
That's the problem, that's the issue, because that's all still part of that R1, and not R3. I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, R1 is the light blue.
When you look at that, just trust me, Joe, I know what I mean. But your northern part that's there, where you're going to see the Montgomerys and stuff like that, with those big, tight blocks and their, their big sheds, if that's what you're looking at, but those are maybe the ones you want.
The other thing is, it doesn't have to be by zoning district. You can say everything north of this street and south of that street.
You can.
A good definition of that is here.
I think with the seventy-five percent of the adjoining property owners and the two, the zoning board and us reviewing it, I think that's fair enough, I don't think we-
I do, too, but I'd also like to change that thirty-five-foot height, I don't think you-
That's fine, I have no problem changing that.
Okay.
But I'm saying, with the multiple reviews and then limiting it even more, I don't think it needs to be limited. If you look at it and you say, we don't want that there.
If you're going to do it, and you say it can happen in any residential district, which is what that currently says, then the seventy-five percent for veto power by anybody less than that is something of test, and you can still say no. You can still set any specific criteria you want by limiting it by height, by limiting it by what kind of siding, by making it like bushes around it. I mean, you can say any of those things, get a special use permit.
It's a special use permit.
But you're going to spend a lot of time fussing with it if this comes to you every month or so.
Starts coming this every month, we'll deal with that, but I think-
Well, Mike's point was, a formal hearing and a notice and everything with content ready to go should be established.
Yes.
If you're really comfortable with this content, we'll call it good. If you want me to change it, I'll change it. And we were thinking then, probably a final formal hearing to pass the amendment next month.
I'd like it to have something, though, about that attached checklist, so that comes with every request.
Add that to that number two.
Yeah.
And I think that, rather, you were talking about a setback of so many feet from the structure. I think maybe so many feet from the property line of that person's property.
Right.
So then, then if they wanted to put away in the back, so the neighbors across the street are complaining-
When you are doing this, though, Judy, keep in mind that no matter what, the accessory structure still has to abide by the rules of the residential zoning.
She just meant for the people that got contacted.
This is, this is concerning the people who would be contacted.
Like the across-the-street neighbor.
So you could give it enough feet so the people across the street would be included, and people on all sites.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, so you want, you want number one to not be adjoining property owners, you want it to be all persons owning property within a hundred feet, or a hundred and fifty feet?
Whatever gets them across the street.
Well, that, yeah, that'd get you across the street, the from-street street.
A hundred feet would get you to my lot line.
What?
A hundred foot would get you right on my lot line.
Yeah, well, that's the idea.
No, it's from their lot line to your lot line.
But a hundred feet would also get you across to a lot of people. I mean, if you, if the first neighbor's eighty feet, and you're the second neighbor, you'd be within a hundred, you'd get to vote, too. I mean, which maybe is not a bad thing.
I don't think it is.
I don't think so either.
Because I know on our street, you know, you've got that empty lot, I'm not adjoining on anything, but I'd vote no, and a hundred feet would not stop you there.
A hundred feet would get you straight across the street. It'd get sometimes to people a little bit diagonal across the street, if you, if a hundred feet is what you want. So instead of the seventy-five percent of adjoining, seventy-five percent of our persons-
But adjoining and-
Well, the hundred feet will catch the adjoining there next door.
Sure.
So I don't think we need to talk about adjoining if you say a hundred feet.
Okay. Because if you get that many people saying yes to it, then it strengthens your cake.
A hundred feet, at least seventy-five percent of those zoning property within a hundred feet of the property line.
Yep.
Yeah, and I guess the third part of that control is regardless of number one and two, planning commission and zoning recommendation and you, a special use permit can contain any language. You've already done that once in, since I've been administrator, when you did it with the Pennegras property. I mean, you lay down specific, even to the nozzles on the irrigated unit, and you can put in what you want. No, you cannot have a metal, yes, you can have a brick face. I don't know if you want to go that far, but I mean, at least a wood structure, you didn't ask for any of that.
But you're going to have to ask your planning commission to pay more attention.
Well, that's the checklist, that's what forces them to-
And do this upright, because this is the sort of thing that will get the city sued by somebody that says you didn't do it right, and I want that thing gone.
Agreed.
All right. You can emphasize that with our next meeting, maybe, Mike. I don't know when your next meeting even is.
Bruce and I did also talk, just keep in mind, we've already went through the process with them. I think by the legal, correct me if I'm not right here, this is not necessary at this point. We are continuing to go forward with you looking at the recommendations, basically to yourself, that we're going to come back with a public hearing for this particular thing with just you. I mean, we don't have to go back to planning and zoning now with these changes. They made their recommendation through the legal process, you're now altering it and basically rewarding it.
We're just waiting for Bruce to bring us an amended ordinance for next month, right?
Yeah, we just need content ready for you, so there should be some side content out of the fly. And then next time, after the location and hearing, we'll pass the amendment. So we've kind of beat that to death.
Oh, I'm sure we can go longer, Bruce.
My opinion in zoning is it's a total waste of time.
So there will be a public hearing.
There's always ways around it. Really, all it does is stymie development, really, in the long run.
All it does is create headaches and bad feelings, and no matter what, if you tried to abide by the zoning code, there are so many violations that occur in the story.
Talking about that's next to you.
I haven't got a good fat, have we?
I say nothing about that.
Just laws. How's the whole discussion in action on ordinance nine-ten, rental units and meter deposits? I think it would be good, ordinance nine-ten, floating around here somewhere, okay? Well, you have ordinance nine-ten, which is one you passed.
Yeah.
That says you will have these things. I guess there was discussion as to whether you want to change it. And again, I have no instructions.
One thing that I'd like to see changed, that we talked about for the last two months, is that if there's a renter, regardless of who the landlord is, but it's a renter in the facility, we do not refund a renter's deposit until said renter leaves, because that's when we're getting burned.
I think-
The renters get their refund back, or their deposit?
After a year of good credit.
Right, right.
They have to show the name, they have good credit before we give them back.
Right, so then they end up leaving, and owe them a month or two.
I don't think you've ever had any situations like that, where we've refunded and then-
Honestly, the time I've been here, I know, I know of one.
I still think we should, I agree with Joe, just change this. My opinion on this ordinance, we probably need to eliminate it, and we just need to fix some of our policies and make them stricter for renters. That's just my opinion.
I think the policies are about as strict as we do yet by moving by statute, I don't know how-
If you have nine-ten in front of you, if you recall, what we added that created all controversy was 2V, that said the owner has to sign up and is fully responsible. That was never there before. That's the new-
Well, but once again, now, if the owners of the property know that their renter has a deposit on file, as soon as we let them know that your renter's a month behind, they're going to now take action. And we have some recourse with the actual renter, because it's not really their fault that their renter isn't paying their bills.
Which is already in place.
Right.
I mean, I'm with you, I mean, but it's right now-
Right now, the landlord is getting word that these people are behind?
Well, we're just getting started.
It's just the beginning, it's a, that's the part.
We're just getting started. This month will be the first month that the few that we have cosigned on will get a notice if their renters haven't paid their- will get a notice if their renters haven't paid their bill.
Well, even if we don't have a cosign.
If you wanted to make make it a practice that the landlords get a late notice if the renters get one, I don't see it, that would be a problem.
Yeah, I think that's.
It would just let them know that their renters weren't paying their bill, we could probably.
Absolutely, I I would think that's that's just good business.
Right, one of the things, keep in mind here, we did do it before, but Nancy wasn't here, so maybe as Nancy be able to help fill in some of the blanks that maybe Laurie and I can't. So that's one of the things that's nice about having Nancy, 'cause she handles these every single day. We are getting, um, not that bad, the the landlords are complaining a little bit, but they come in, for example, we had one come in today and sign, you know, that we thought we would have a lot more issues with and, I mean, so.
But basically they signed, that doesn't mean we're, we haven't gotten to a situation where we've had to drain blood from them yet. So I don't, whether or not it works, I don't know, but I I don't see that it would be an issue to send a notice to the landowner for every late notice that goes out that is a rental.
Right, I I think that's our goal, is to have that happen.
It would have to get set up, but yeah, we could sure do that.
But I don't know, the the renter may have to sign something authorizing the city to do that because it might be a privacy issue.
Yeah, that I and I can check with the league on that, on what are what are issues on with that, I don't know, but.
Well, you can put it in right in your application.
I think you can, I think Bruce is, I don't know if that violates any privacy because you're allowing, they are still a landlord tenant relationship.
You have in the code and you've always had in the code, if they haven't paid within seven days of a delinquency notice, they can be terminated. I mean, that's your ultimate club, if you do that, then you threaten the termination, you have your deposit and you don't have much at stake at that point.
Our only problem is our billing cycle runs, for example, November one, the bills that came out November first, that is September, it's always the middle of the month, September fifteenth to October fifteenth meter readings. By the time you get to the sixteenth of November, when we do the disconnect notices, you have another month on there already.
We don't have to wait.
That hasn't been billed yet because of the way our bills.
But you don't have to wait thirty days for those disconnect notice, this says seven.
No, I'm not saying thirty days.
How can we line up the billing?
I'm saying the bill that they're paid that is due on November fifteenth is already September to October.
Shorten it up.
Yeah.
Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yeah, Bruce, how do you do that, Bruce, we have to have time to read meters, reread problem issues, print bills, get them now.
Fifteenth of October.
What's that?
You read the meter on the fifteenth of October.
We read the meter on fifteenth of October, what's that?
The bill was out in November?
The bills go out on the first, they've always gone out on the first.
For October, for September to October fifteenth.
September fifteenth to October.
So the bills go out two weeks after the meter is read.
Correct.
Right.
Right.
In round figures.
Right.
And then if that's said, this bill is delinquent within seven days.
Correct.
Well, and and right now, we're giving him fifteen days, the bill goes out goes out on the first and they have till the fifteenth. So I don't know if you want to change that, right now, we're giving him fifteen days.
Right, the bill is due.
Well, Bruce said that's what's already is.
Well, at that point, okay, you've got another month, but have they gotten their termination notice yet? I'm guessing you're not sending those termination notices that.
Termination notices go out on the sixteenth.
Yes.
You do.
The bills are due on the fifteenth, the termination notices go out the first business day after that.
Okay, so at that point, you got two bills and a deposit in hand and a termination notice out there.
That's if we haven't refunded the deposit.
Yeah.
Which needs to, and they'll say.
Well, it could be, I bet.
When is the actual turnoff date then, if they give a termination?
We have to, by state law, we have to give them seven business days from the time we send out the disconnect notices. Those go out on the sixteenth.
Okay, and this is the time of year where this.
The worst.
Right.
That is to mean like.
You know, I'm all for it for shutting somebody off in July.
Yeah.
I don't want to turn into a popsicle.
Yeah, it does make it hard.
It's hard, we just have.
And you also have people who call and make arrangements and say, I will be in on whatever day to pay my bill and then you have those that don't follow through with those arrangements. There are there are a lot of extenuating circumstances involved with different people, but.
Like I said, I would like to do whatever we have to do to make sure that is when they're renters, that we keep the deposit till they move.
Cause we're looking at.
I'm just thinking to myself, I'm just.
I guess, as a guy that used to rent, nobody ever gave me my deposit back till I moved, didn't matter how long I was in an apartment or a house.
But what we're losing money on is, let's just say hypothetically, you don't get it, only leave, by the time you know, or have the ability to shut off said power, spend thirty-seven days hypothetically.
Hypothetically, that's not right.
Thirty-seven days, we can't shorten that up at all, we can't tighten that a little bit.
We can shorten the time that we're giving them to pay the bill.
Yeah.
I mean, if the bill's out on the first.
Yeah, if we do the reading on the fifteenth, we can send out the bills by the twenty-second, so then they're due on the seventh instead of the fifteen.
We read the meters on the fifteenth, then we have to have time to review the the readings.
They they give you, that gives you a week.
Yeah, that but there are other things going on also besides just that, but but yes, I see what you're saying.
Well, yeah, and I I don't know if it's doable or not, so if it's not, just tell me no and.
Yeah, it's, we we have to, what what we get what, when we do our meter readings, then we get what we call a high-low report that shows us problems. We have usually seven pages of those to go through, which after you've done it.
Per resident or per?
No, no, per for everything, for everything. Um, we go through those, um, you can figure out a lot of them, it's just not a problem, it's just a computer issue, but there's usually a list of meters that the guys have to go reread, double check or whatever that we have to.
Seven pages of errors every month?
Well, a lot of them are just little issues with the with the program, it's not a problem, but we still have to go through and take those out.
And would you.
Yours comes up every month on your storage building because you don't use any water.
Oh, and so that would be, so they would think that.
So things, there are things like that, but we're we're used to those, we just take those out, but.
So the computer, the computer would say, this is for any water, that must be an error, so it's reading that.
Yeah, it recognizes that as well, even though it happens every month and why some of those do that, I don't know, but.
Okay, is there a way we can?
But we have to go through those.
Computer people?
Yeah.
They do.
That that's really.
Okay, so how many days will give the guys who are on double check these meters if they need to?
As soon as I get the list done, they usually do it for me that same day.
Same day, at the same.
That's that's normally not a problem.
Yeah, then you gotta be mean to the owner.
I, you know.
I know. I I visited a little bit with Laurie this afternoon about the possibility of having a list of anyone who was, who received a disconnect notice or whatever, to bring it to the meeting and we could, which could be published or whatever. I don't know if you need that.
I don't think that's anyone's.
We did some checking on that, Judy, we actually discussed it with Mike and we did some checking.
Well, I was I was always suspicious of it and then, so I did some research with the other city administrators and not only is that a no, it's a hell no.
Well, I don't.
Brunswick Brunswick does it every month, but they go into executive session, review them, if they want to turn them off, they turn them off, if they want to give them another month, they give them another month.
And I don't think.
It's not done in a public.
No, it's not, exactly, session every month.
That's not yet kosher.
That's too much like head office.
Head office.
Disconnect.
But basically, you know, it goes both ways, just real quickly, just to let you know that with the Nebraska urban regulations, the one thing that's listed in there that's with the privacy is utility bills, it's specifically mentioned utility bills and I I had about ten to fifteen quick little replies from administrators that I can tell you there was one town that does do that, well, kinda like what Brunswick did, and I have a feeling I opened up a couple of forms across the state because Alma now says, well, we do that every month and somebody jumped on there and said, you better stop it.
Anyway, do I need to make a motion with that, with having renters not be refunded deposits until they are?
Is that the, oh, we need.
I want to think it's false.
That's a city code issue, we have to amend that.
Okay.
And it says right now, utility deposit shall be refunded when all services are disconnected and all bills are paid or consumer has completed a twelve-month period without a delinquency notice or insufficient check on any city utility service.
I just wanna take out the.
Yeah, that's that's second section.
The war.
So you wanna take it out for?
Never again.
And if nobody just refunded.
Just reimburse it when they're moving.
But you wanna limit that to a renter.
To renters, yeah, if somebody's a homeowner, you have a lot more recourse.
Okay.
Homeowner can't just disappear in the middle of the night, they still left a home.
I don't know, we would deal with closed houses like that for how long.
Well, but they left the home.
I mean, that would get.
Now we get to.
Well, that's why I didn't, I had to take.
It doesn't seem to stop them.
I just don't want the the renters
To receive that.
To receive a refund and then be able to skip out and stick not only the city, but the landlord too. I think this protects everybody, if you got a renter, we have it a lot, end of story.
But we still have this issue with the landlords being responsible for standing.
I think we should go back to where we were on that.
So far, so good, and now we're gonna start notifying the landlords right away, as soon as the the renters are delinquent, now the landlords will be notified right away. Need a motion for that? To make that a procedural thing to happen?
There again, we have a the document that we have that we give everybody that comes in, I think we need to implement that into that, I'm a bit aware of it.
Yeah, I'll have to see what the language actually says on our application for service and we could just.
Yeah, would you guys bring that for the next month and then we can vote to implement that?
Sure.
You want to vote or?
Yeah, they want to.
Or you want to just do that, you want us to implement that into that?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and just implement.
I'll give it to Mike, he can.
We, I mean, we need to do like.
Yeah, we still have to change.
I guess I would like to see.
I'll second it, I'll second it.
But let's see what else.
Joe made a motion to second.
Okay, I was gonna see what else Bruce had decided there about what you were reading in the document.
I'm not saying anything.
What was your motion, Joe?
That all renters, deposits stay with the city until they disconnect the service and we'll vote.
Well, we do that, then we're gonna have to bend your budget.
Right.
And then to start as soon as we can get the applications changed, as as soon as a renter is getting a delinquency notice, the land or the home or the owner of the property would also be getting this.
Right. And that's what you said? I will second that.
And you said. That's just a procedural motion, there's nothing fancy there, do you want to do it?
We'll do that.
Judy?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Jason?
Hi.
We have to use that with ordinance nine ten.
And then still, the current ordinance nine ten and the eleven oh four, we want to eliminate that section B. We had a motive for two or three months to make the landlord sign up.
I was gonna leave that in there, let's see how it works. Now, we passed it and you guys said there's not too much blowback, so let's see if it improves it and.
I'm sorry, what was it, what's?
Just not.
Thanks.
No.
We really have, but we really haven't, Joe.
So we are leaving that into it.
What you're saying is it's really not that scary.
We have a.
Maybe you should go back and look at the tape, she did say to help everybody, so.
By signing this paper, exactly what do we agree to?
What?
By signing that paper with our renters, exactly what do we agree to?
You would be cosigning for the utility bills.
So if they don't pay it, then we do?
That's what it says right now.
But we'll notify you if they have to move and you can give us the authority to go ahead and shut everything off.
And shut them down?
Yeah.
And we will have to, we'll now have a deposit on file from every renter, no matter how long they've rented for.
And also when we send out late notices on the sixteenth, your renter will get one and so would you. So you would know immediately that they have not made their utility bill.
The way this is modifying, it's actually we're trying to help you. If you believe it or not, it's not the Cheryl Bailey when she came up to that about the landlord, we're not trying to stick you with it, but we're trying to help inform you now.
This thing gets thirty miles a gallon.
More information about your renters.
It just worries me that the renter is going to assume, since I just cosigned with them to stand their bill, why do they want to pay their bill if they know their landlord's got to pay it for them?
Well, they they don't have to, they have to pay it and if they get a late late notice, you get that.
We can just say, cut off?
Yeah, get it, cut them off, and then we have a security deposit and you guys shouldn't have to pay a thing.
Right, okay.
What what is the security deposit now?
Two hundred, two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars now?
Or just?
And we did discuss that too, but I I gotta tell you, two hundred dollars in in this neck of the woods is about appropriate. I don't think you can go a little higher, Wayne did and a couple of the other towns did.
Let's see, let's see if this helps alleviate the problem, then if it's six months, it doesn't, then we'll.
Will we visit in six months?
I mean, I'm all for, like I said, with the the deposit, I just think that, you know, we're not out to, because it takes someone to move in now in a normal city, you know, a thousand plus to even get into a place, you know, because they have to be first and last and utility deposits and.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure we make these changes to the half. I think this is solid, personally.
Okay.
Well, considering we didn't have a public hearing, okay, where were our? Approval of housing grant claims.
Which you should not have in front of you because they were not in the packets, but they were in front of you when you got here. One was for seven hundred and twenty-five and the other one was for twenty-one thousand five hundred and seventy dollars.
That's good, that means it's a pre-usage, I don't know why they're gonna go back. I'll make a motion to approve the CBPG claims.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded to approve the claims, Judy?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Jason? Hi. That is approved. Uh, discussion action on M O E charges from municipal energy agency Nebraska, okay.
Well, I'll I'll speak first, but then I don't know whether to turn it, uh, David, is, it was presented to you, this agreement, and one of the things that I believe is in your best interest with this is it's coming down the pike regardless. How you want to handle it is really your choice, but there is no interest charges. If you don't do anything, it simply starts in April and you're not obligated by a new Rita agreement that has some stip, you know, stipulations and some provisions. With that being said, I think that Bruce would probably be more apt to advise you whether to sign a Rita agreement, I don't think you should, I agree with you Bruce on Friday that, I think that it's gonna go into place automatically.
Right, whether we like it or not.
The the agreement they sent you is so self-serving on their part.
Right.
It essentially says, yeah, you agree, we didn't do anything wrong, you're gonna pay all this and no matter what, na 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 na. They've already said they're gonna start adding it on the bill anyway. If you don't fight it, and that may be difficult, they're gonna start adding it on the bill. But I would hesitate to sign off and say.
We don't have to sign it, do we?
No.
I would, I would, I would continue, I would pay it because we don't have a choice.
Well, unless you see forty towns rise up in anger and say they screwed up bad and the mean people should have to eat some of this.
Right, as soon as you have one, as soon as you have your attorney, you've just lost money, because we're fighting three seventy-five a month.
Yeah, I'll put a total of twenty-five thousand dollars or something like that.
Thirty, thirty-two thousand.
Right, and that's with their attorneys versus the small-town attorneys?
Well, that's why I said you have to have.
Small-town.
Right, you'd have to have a large number of towns protesting.
Right, and even if we win, then they just increase our rates.
They already do that.
They already do that.
You're already, you're already a lone wolf because I don't think you're gonna get too many of these other communities fighting, they've all agreed, they've been brought into their councils.
Well, I just don't think we have to sign the thing that says you're not culpable because I think they are culpable.
I agree.
It's like Obamacare, you can make me, you can force me to buy insurance, you can't make me agree to it. And by the way, if you don't agree, it terminates your session and kicks you out, that is.
You wouldn't know this for any reason, would you?
Yes, I would.
So anyway, if if, unless you want to keep revisiting number ten, I think this is the direction we should go. Um, I I've got a couple of things coming up with county attorneys this week that I gotta take care of, otherwise I was gonna go tomorrow to the meet, but they're not gonna really discuss it, I was just gonna find out more information.
They're just gonna add it to our monthly book, our monthly bill.
I I'm not gonna get.
We shouldn't pay it in one lump somehow.
I asked Bruce from a legal advice, is there any reason any way, theory wise, we should pay this upfront and I I can't think of a reason.
Well, and like Bruce said, I mean, there may, there may be communities that decide to fight this, so the fact that we haven't signed it and agreed to it, and we're just letting them bill us on a monthly basis, that way if somebody does win something, we can jump on their bandwagon too.
Well, I mean, for example, in thirty seconds, most of you were not active at the time, but there was a huge battle some years ago with Kansas Nebraska Gas. And the lead municipal, municipalities actually got up a consortium of thirty or forty towns to contest a huge rate increase by Kansas Nebraska. And I was out to O'Neil and, and working in meetings for some time. And we finally renegotiated something way different than they originally proposed. But they were the elephant in the room and it had to be thirty or forty towns if you were gonna fight with them. The, the flip side of that here is it's so difficult because we have this contract with me that says we'll pay their bills. You know, so if they, they should've billed this correctly in the first place probably and we would've paid it then. They just misfigured it, uh, the way that transportation was or whatever their basis for it was. But if, I don't know, the only question I would have is how do you wanna document this or do you wanna document it at all? You wanna table their, their agreement indefinitely? Do you wanna take a direct motion to not sign the agreement, but to initially pay the bills as submitted?
Yeah.
Well, say that then.
I think I did.
Okay, so Joe makes a motion to not sign the mean.
And let them bill us by the month and not pay at all.
Yeah. The mean assessment agreement, what's the name of the assessment?
R I T A.
Yeah.
Second, your motion. Judy?
I have it.
Second.
Second.
Who's in favor?
I.
Joe?
Hi.
Jason?
No.
He likes those big electric companies.
I don't like what you're paying me dying.
Uh, administrators comments, website update.
Website update in front of you, I just gave you a quick little overview, this is a plug-in.
Front page.
Attorney comments.
Oh, we gotta turn it first.
And where's number eleven?
Went away.
I guess.
What's wrong with that French?
The city attorney's comments, you already got the front of the dog case, that was, I was trying to get that in so that the police are here when the discussion happened. The other thing I would let you know is I turned in five lien searches to the Chivers abstract office ten days ago. They came back today. We now have current records and details. She charged us a hundred and fifty dollars, which was certainly very reasonable. I couldn't have gone down there and spent a half a day for that and written all this up. And now we have the information necessary for the quiet title actions on nuisance properties. I have drafts started to do the quiet title action. This is all acted on by the council six months ago, if you recall, and you said, try to get titled to these screwed up properties so we can keep selling it. And I'm working on that. But we now have the lien searches in hand. I'll start this over the winter, we'll probably have some hearings. I was hoping to combine them all into one. encompassing filing and the talk to the clerk of the district court. She said they don't accept multiple track filings on tax foreclosures anymore and she doesn't think she wants to accept them on quiet title action either. So individual filings will be about a hundred dollars court costs involved on each property. But assuming we can clear them away and I'll spend as little time and combine them all as, as best we can to get clear title. And we've got two or three of these that are very saleable, but they have an old mortgage or they have something nasty on them that we can't sell them as a practical matter. We've gotta clean those away. And we've beat the horse to death over the last two years calling these lenders and chasing them all over the country. And they don't care. They have a worthless lien on a almost worthless property and they're not gonna spend any money and they're not gonna release it. So we've got to do something if we wanna be able to sell them. So I'll keep working on that, that's the only extent of the report.
Now to administrators comments, website update.
The website update, we're working with Carrie Pitzer and I just threw F Y I in for you, just to take a look at the. Um, she threw me what's called HTML template and, and she's starting to fill in and we're putting in the blanks as we go. Uh, because you're gonna have a lot of documents that are being fed.
We listed twice on your sheet too. It's the last thing on your first page and the second thing on your second page.
Oh, wow, they did that.
Put it in more often and it'll look like you get more things done.
I need more done at first. Uh, but actually she's, Carrie is actually shooting for, since she's in charge now, they have this present and readable and ready to go by mid-December. Which I thought was excellent.
And you're gonna take out all the other ones or?
Yeah, that'll probably, the way.
Well, but we don't have control of all the others.
I know, but the ones that we, there are other ones we have.
We have control of one and that one, because of the website address, once this one goes live, the other one comes down.
Okay.
They can't coincide, so the other one that you see, that's kind of a really generic. Not good.
Right.
As far as any of those other excess ones that are out floating, they have different addresses and I don't really control those. And I won't link to them, I mean, we'll just link to the ones that we know are valuable, like the chambers and the plant bill and the education and stuff like that. Um, do I have another thing on there for the discussion, the library plans? Well, let me just go through libraries on this sheet, so I'll just go real quickly. Power plant, we asked that to be exercised, that was exercised right away on Friday and it's due to be exercised again this month. We're looking at the cat engine, we run the cat engine because that's the main one. We also put one of the other turbine, big engines up on so we can get them running as well. There's been new software installed, um, new computers been in to monitor and I've been in with the caterpillar trying to make sure that when you're dealing with nineteen, ninety-ish software at best and you're trying to get it to two thousand and thirteen, that's been a little bit of a feat. I, I did put on here, I'll be attending the next meeting on Wednesday, November thirteenth, which is tomorrow, but I have to back out because I've got some other priorities that will go way above that in the next couple of days, so. Um, electrical priorities, Jake's been working on it with Schaefer, the Schaefer grade, have you seen the building out there?
Isn't G E O supposed to bring us back the upgrade plans?
Upgrade for?
Our electrical system?
Yeah, I can check in. I don't know if it's right now that they're gonna do it this month.
Well, no, I just thought it was by the end of the year.
I think so. I'll check the date to find out.
Because that was this summer. Remember when they came and you talked about upgrading the transmission and everything?
Are they going to write up a written summary of the utility estimates for up north also or are you coming to that?
Yes, and I'm gonna come to that too, in a second too. Uh, electrical, like I said, they've been working with the Family Dollar. I did just talk to Davy Jones, I love to say that name. Davy is the, and he wants to be called Davy by the way, uh, general contractor and they have been pushed back, surprise, surprise. Uh, but Family Dollar will, they're actually pouring concrete tomorrow and they're gonna use, so things are moving along fairly quick. Beyond my December, no.
Did you figure out anything with like some reflective tape or something to go around that big hole?
Well, and I talked to the guys about that.
It's got concrete on it.
And we, instead of doing that.
Truck's still there though?
No, it's not.
I think.
Was it gone tonight?
Yeah.
Was there this one?
I, I think the answer to that was, okay, well, before we started the reflectors, just get the thing filled and, and the weather's been good enough for us to do it, so.
Any updates on the tennis courts?
Uh, yes, I talked to them and they were unaware, our police department, well, let me say this nicely, I don't get them in trouble because I don't want Bruce to be mad at me either. But they were unaware there was a throw switch on the east side of the tennis courts to shut them off. They're now aware. So they're, we're gonna check the timer out and if it's on past a certain time, they're just gonna shut them off. They're gonna go through. Even though I think part of the police department would love to have them on all night just for security, but I think that we do not need it from two A M to six A M, so.
Could get by with, you know, only one of one.
Yeah, that's what I suggest, we'll see.
And they are. You don't need to be able to.
Is it possible to try to make up on?
Middle of the tennis court.
Let's take a.
We can even do that with time, I'd have to check with Jake on the timing, but I think right now we're trying to get the time, so is it coming on, blame people?
Nice being.
Um, okay, you have the northern fork development, that's also going in place. We're looking at boring across, there's some costs that's gonna come out, but I think it's one of those costs that as we earn budget, we're just gonna have to eat, if we want development, we're gonna have to put in, they're not gonna be cheap. But we're gonna have to build electrical lines, we're working on the gas.
That's part of that though.
No. Then we can probably look at the sewer and water, but we've already put that in motion, we've got it in the budget to take care of sewer and water because we're going all the way up forth. Um, it's, it's probably the right thing for the city to do. We're gonna be working with paving districts and, and trying to get them assessed and they're gonna be coming back to you on that, so. Uh, as far as the electric and as far as the, and I guess I've met with Source Gas and I've met with the cable company and everybody but the telephone company, so I have to talk to Grant about that, but as far as where these lines are gonna go, there's actually a platted alley. We're gonna get that set up as if we believe there's gonna be five to ten houses in the next five years. So, and okay, I think we have to go in that direction because if you believe there's never gonna be a house and you sit and do nothing, you'll get nothing, so.
So the development company can attempt to find a developer and tell him there's gonna be utilities there?
Absolutely.
The utilities will so far be the electric sewer and water?
Electric sewer, water and gas will be up there too.
To both sides of the block?
Both sides of the block. It'll run through the alley, then supply the alley between, and then of course the development company has got both sides.
Well, you know, we've got that option, but we're looking to find a developer who will actively market the thing and take up the option. The development company doesn't currently have the money to complete the purchase. But we'll try and find some private parties that will, if they know that, that's a big deal and you think that would start to make it work.
The only, the issue, the only deal that might be, we need to come readdress, but not necessarily now, is that if we look at both sides of that block, we'll have these utilities in place, you have no fifth street. So how we handle that will be next on our list of things to do. There's no fifth street that runs by that block.
It's not there, but you're gonna run the utilities up the right of way?
We're gonna run them up the alley between, in the block that's in mention, it'll be between.
Serve all the lots from the alley, water, sewer and electric?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And the primary will be on the, probably the north side, but they're, they're gonna hook up going like this, splice them out each way. So that the lots will be served even if they're not occupied.
Kind of uncommon to run water and sewer up an alley, but I guess it can be done. That's a lot of stuff to put in an alley, a J E O.
The water and sewer, actually, just so you don't get bogged down in cement, water and sewer is already lined to go on fourth. That can't run with the electric cable and telephone.
Well, that's what I would think, okay.
Those two.
Water and sewer is not going up the alley.
Water and sewer will go up fourth, we already have access to come in from the other side if they need to go up fifth.
You'd have to go up fifth with water and sewer also.
Or come across, you know, like we do over on Bell Street, so. You do have a couple of different options there, but that's just something that we need to probably.
But there'll be available service to all of those locks, that's the point.
Yes.
That's the, that's the understanding, okay?
Winterization, basically, the guys went into full phone mode there to take care of things, concession stand, of course, we dealt with the school and if you give me permission and Bruce gives me the okay, I'm just gonna sell it back to Richard all. Never mind, that was just a ton of.
No, in all seriousness, why do we owe?
I don't.
I was making notes, you know what?
That concession stand that they built, it's kinda like a half, half of it. I'm ready to just.
That's my gas, I don't, but it's probably for insurance reasons.
Well, it was back when we were using it all the time, for baseball and softball, one baseball. And now we don't use it.
You don't, no, the, not the program's not there, but even the program's not under the city.
Right, obviously, right.
I don't recall any paperwork on the concession stand at all.
So we've just been kinda set with this unwritten agreement?
Yes, I do, but I don't know that I've ever done any or seen any.
Yeah. They did claim it out and we do have it winterized regardless for this year. Um, water and sewer are almost the same things we were talking about. We do have some fire hydrants we need to replace. We did replace one um, right north of Family Dollar. Uh, they're not cheap, by the way, so I can't replace a hundred of them.
And more or less are family.
You have those like marked, they're not operating, right?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I'm sure Tim's got a handle on it, but.
Uh, streets wise, you're looking at the sweeper's been out quite a bit with the leaves coming down and the moisture, he's been able to do a lot of good work there. But of course, it doesn't show when he goes and it comes right down behind him, but sweeper has been out quite a bit this last month. Uh, J E O engineers, I put that in your packet, it's more of F Y I to look at the costs that the G E O came up with on the streets and what we're gonna be looking at from the street paving districts and the direction we need to go there. Board conduct, I'm gonna go ahead and call this one because it's running into timing, I think we have a P C E D meeting that night on Tuesday the nineteenth. Um, there's a board training for all boards, but I can probably push it back a week or two.
Wait, it says that that's not required, why is it not?
I think we couldn't get everyone there.
Well, then, I mean, there should be, we should have multiple sessions to try to get everybody.
Map, map.
Uh, Midwestern, help me out, they're the ones that took over rural water, come on Nancy, help me out. Midwestern Assistance? They're the, the newer group and not exciting, the acronym name and that's Midwestern Assistance Project or something like that.
Yeah, let's see how their program is first, okay.
Well, no, they're gonna be better than anything we can get from, well, particularly me, I mean, you know what I'm talking about there. Not the guy you're talking about, but the Corinne, so.
I would suggest an M V P.
Yeah, yeah, sure. And I think they would be good, but this map is the one we deal with and I think that this will be a good session, I think, we definitely need it.
Is it scheduled for the nineteenth? I mean, are you expecting people to attend that?
The nineteenth is the date that we have scheduled with him.
At what time?
Sixteen.
But you're saying it's not gonna happen now?
Oh, you wanna go with it?
I've got other things going on that night.
Still have it, and then like you said, if we need to have another one, have another one.
I can cancel, but I need to know that.
Right here, it's, it's going on then.
Absolutely, sure.
Okay.
And it's okay for you to be here as a quorum because as long as it's a training I checked into with him as the statute, he does this all the time is that it's, uh, he's gonna be very.
We can also be at all, at a silent auction too.
What's that? You didn't talk business though, I don't think. Library, uh, you have the first set of plans, they are putting a town hall open house meeting on Thursday. What this simply is, is no more than showing the blueprints that you have in a blown up version to let the people see what's actually being done by J E O.
Can I ask you a couple of quick questions?
Sure.
Does it make any sense to put the children's computer, uh, reading area as far away from the children's computer area as you can possibly get?
I don't think the building's gonna be that big.
Well, yeah, but why not put it right out here instead of?
I don't know, the one complaint I heard, the one thing I heard them adamantly saying at the planning meeting we did was put the kids rooms right next to the bathrooms, look how that worked out.
They're nowhere close either.
Right.
The other thing.
People don't care, that's fine, but that's just one thing I remember. Whatever we do, put it next to the bathroom.
There's no, there's no family restroom?
Uh, these are things that you want for the, the public input, nobody's saying they're not a family, but.
Usually you have men, women and other, or no family.
Uh, unisex, either side can go in.
Are they still sticking with a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot?
I think so.
And are we really putting a coffee bar?
That puts this over a million dollars, right?
No, they, they had one, I know, and then they, and then they had different one, they shrunk it down, so I think it's.
This is the newest one.
Right.
This is the one just done.
Whether or not it's.
This is the revised one.
They already shrunk it down.
I mean, it's gonna probably come down depending on what you put, you know, some of these.
Does that include stuff?
Yeah.
Does that include stuff or is that just building?
I understand the problem, Joe.
Okay.
Starbucks. How sponsored.
The other thing is there's no storm shelter, God forbid, but.
There will be J E O, there will be one that's designated.
Uh, bathrooms.
They'll be designated, in fact, I think the storage areas.
I'm gonna spend my last minutes in somebody's restroom.
If, if, if the rooms.
You don't have to go outside if it's your last minutes.
Hey, after visiting some of the restrooms I've walked into, I would. Take me now.
This, this will all come up at the hearing, right?
Yes.
I heard a couple of people from Chris mentioned.
Not necessarily, Thursday after. November twenty first. What time?
Their circulation desk and office are side by side right inside the entrance.
Right.
And here your office is set way away and if there's only one body in the building and they're in the office, then they're gonna. And here your office is set way away, and if there's only one body in the building, and they're in the office, then they're gonna be like racing back and forth?
Yeah, one of the things you have to look at, the, the, uh, office workroom is to the, uh, north side, this whole area that you see tables and the circulation desk are mobile, they had to just put them in here. They can move to be, what did I say, more.
I thought putting the newspapers right in front of the door was a great idea. Well, that would be circulation.
Put next to the fireplace.
Oh, there you go. At least you have a fireplace.
What, are we looking at bond issue in May also for the?
Bruce and I talked about this, there's a couple things that, you know, as far as I talked to John Trezak too. Obviously, if they're only getting X amount of sales tax, they, they're gonna have to go with, uh, different things they gotta bring to the council. If they only have enough sales tax to pay for a five hundred thousand dollar building, for example, or a four hundred thousand dollar building, then you have a couple of options, you can say, this is all you're gonna get, make it work, or you're gonna sit there and say, we could look at a G O general obligation bond and.
Get rid of the fireplace and the coffee bar.
You would probably have input.
Have, has Trezak run the math on what the current sales tax will support for a bond issue?
Um.
And I guess my point is, if he has not yet, I can do that in ten minutes and have numbers next month, so that you would know early in the game, just do it like this.
We've talked, John Trezak, we've talked about Bruce, but I don't really see this, I've not seen this.
Well, it doesn't matter, I mean, it's just, well, the sales tax support, the sales tax is so much a month, what will that support, look at it, and then is anything above that to say you'll feed it or find a way? That makes no sense.
I, I think the hope is, and I think the, with the, the board and that, and I go to the library board, I think it's a pretty good job, this, this particular drawing has been put through, if I said ten changes, I would probably be on the low side, there's been a lot of changes put to this, including the whole meeting area room moving entirely from the north side to the south side, with the idea that the parking will be more accessible, so they're thinking about things along the way, and, and these are all subject to, like, having an extra metal.
And, and that's where you would hope, though, that the engineering firm would step up and maybe make some more pointed or strong suggestions, where, like, don't put the storage where there's only one, one access to it from the very back corner.
Right.
That makes no sense. Like I said, put in the children's reading area, so they gotta go from the computer room across the entire library, disturbing every adult in their book so they can sit down and read.
Now, what, what do you say? You're going from the computer to here?
No, 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 this is their, this is their, they wanna read, they come over here.
Six, uh, six.
Six children, it's an adult.
No, it's.
No, it's just children.
I said you was there.
Yeah.
That's not, this is for the children.
Yeah, if I probably tell you. If you put all of this aside, so they could go there and then there.
And, and, and basically it's gonna be open to, uh, there'll be another couple of designs as well, some of the older designs, and it's, it's meant for input and say, people, why don't you go and say, hey, why don't you throw this in? And they take it back to the JEO.
People may be in love the way it is, I'm shutting up.
You're making some good points, man. You should come in and say, hey, why is this, why is that, why is this?
Sir, this is scary, Paul is scared, so.
She should.
What, what is the average monthly sales tax income for the library's ticket right now?
Twenty-five to three thousand dollars.
It's thirty-three thousand a year, but, uh, what is the average?
Okay, I don't care about monthly, thirty-three, thirty-three thousand a year, is the projected average.
Last month, forty-six hundred.
That's what I budget.
If sales tax stays the same.
And that was with side dampers?
What's that?
Was side damper a big portion of that? I always kinda wondered that, with no side damper pulling power and paying sales tax?
That'll go down, yeah.
It's gonna take a whack at that, isn't it?
I don't think that affected it very much at all, in fact, the most of the stuff that side damper.
I would disagree.
How could it not?
I don't think so.
Your three phases, twenty-four thousand dollars a year, or a month?
I, I did the math, and it surprised you how, um, it wasn't.
Because you only get the one, one and a half or something, right?
Because I think it's such a weird headset, we based it down so low, you know, those three phases, it was such a deal, it was set up out there, I mean, the quantity, yeah.
Two, two thousand so hard. Electricity is the majority of the sales tax the city gets, right? Just in general. It almost has to be, doesn't it, as far as products sold that are taxed? I don't know.
It's open house, so it's from six thirty to nine.
I think it's.
I'll tell you what, I don't, no, what we do actually fairly, it's, it's actually not been that bad detail outside.
Seven to nine? Seven to nine?
Six thirty to nine.
Well, I just, I just kinda wondered, I mean.
On the twenty-first?
You show up at seven, I'm sure those will be there.
It's at the library, right?
Right here, right here, right.
Library meeting here?
No, you tell the library?
The open house is here.
The open house is here.
The open house is right here, in the community.
On Thursday.
On Thursday, twenty first.
At six thirty?
The town hall, this is a town hall meeting?
Yes.
Not an open house?
I thought their flyer said it's at the library.
Town hall, open house.
Okay.
About the library?
About the library, Joe.
Well, then I need to call somebody, because I thought it was at the library.
I second that.
Hurry up.
It's six thirty.
I'm done. I'm done, I don't think there's much more I can tell you, that, uh, there's a lot of that that's on there to just kinda, I changed the format, so you could go through the board format, if you have any.
I like software training, did you guys go and use?
Ask the girls, they just more with the, I think about billing.
That was a reference course on all of our programs that we have, you have council payment, billing, uh, general ledger, all of them.
I like your meetings attended as a civic leader, if it helps me kinda rank with that.
I ran with.
As opposed to the ones where he's the greedy guy.
I know, my buddy.
I just, I understand, I understand, while I, I, I understand like your active community, just letting us know your active, our church, diocese, oh, ha.
We should. Yeah, well, let's get to council comments.
All right. Council comments.
What are we doing with the tarring machine?
The tarring machine was put out for you to take a look to see, we wanted to know basically what they look like, or what we do.
Can we lease one?
No.
Why?
Uh, cost per unit, but I don't think we're doing anything.
Can we do a share one with other smaller municipalities around here that probably can't afford one either?
I, I can certainly find.
Or could we buy one and then lease it at exorbitant rates to municipalities around here? Well, because if we can't lease one, why don't we, yeah, we can't get one up here, I mean, it's something to look at.
I, I've talked to the communities, what few communities succinctly, Joe, sorry, doesn't be misunderstood, what few communities are around here want nothing to do with a tarring machine.
Then why do people wanna do anything with it?
Because I think it was brought up as a council suggestion, and I agree, I don't think it's a bad idea, we do have a lot of tarring to do. Most of them have gone the cheaper year by year route of simply bringing in those that lease, or the companies that have them, and tar the streets.
Well, we did that a few years ago, you hire outfit, the tarring machine, they come in and burn as many trees as you can afford. Yep. Yeah, you're just gonna do a cost comparison, that's all.
What you have there is about a twenty-five to thirty-five thousand dollar unit.
And what's it cost to bring them in?
Laurie, what was the last time we did a tarring? Ten thousand?
Ten thousand dollars is what we budgeted.
Per X amount of.
Wasn't very many streets.
That sounds like that would pay for itself rather quickly.
That was your point all along, and I, I understand, I'm just telling you.
Turn so much foot. Yeah, but there's no prices on this thing, I hear.
This is, uh, basically a model, this comes from the state of Nebraska, and there's like four different models in there.
So, we wanna do the tarring for the streets, instead of hiring a company, but we don't have time to do the trees, we don't have time to do the garbage, we do have.
We do have time to do the trees. We're not gonna do the garbage.
We're not gonna do the garbage, okay?
Well, we don't know yet, we don't.
But, you know what I'm saying? So.
Well, I did it.
There, we just, we're throwing it on the pile there.
That was brought up a little bit too, and I, I know Judy can vouch for that, but the, the one thing, and I've been telling people over and over, don't talk to me about not doing the trees, because he's right out there.
No, you're clearly been doing it, I've seen it.
I mean, over and over and over and over and over again, and he may not be hitting them all, but he's trying to get, no, in, in general, he's doing, they're doing actually.
Right, yeah, you and me.
They are busier now than they've ever been, and part of it is because of progress.
And also, I did see them, like, there's Paul, there's Savan, and the panel, or Buckner, so.
Oh, my God, whatever.
Okay, we on council comments yet?
Mayor?
Well, I guess we are. Three hours in, you're gonna get over.
We need to do something to commemorate the mayor of the group on, uh, twelve fifteen, just saying.
Should've done it at eight, eight oh nine.
Okay, then mostly go home.
Okay. You've got council comments?
City superintendent report, I'm gonna see that again.
Well, next month?
I would, I would only want one every quarter, I thought.
Is it quarter coming up in December?
It's quarter, yeah, October.
So, I would like to see one next month. Um, the employee reimbursement for shirts and things like that, um, are we doing that with park facilities also? Because I don't think we defined that.
I don't, yeah, I think the only one.
Because I believe I saw.
Did it with Bob and that, and Bob is.
I mean, not that he over eighty-four thousand dollars is not a base, I just wanna make sure. I don't know if council can feel strongly enough about it, so I don't know.
I know we didn't get Ryan one.
Um, okay, well, I mean, I said, if we're gonna get, if we're gonna get a season hall, maybe, I don't know.
We need to go through about which is the shirts, the private shirts.
What do you get from?
He got, he didn't, I, I told him because of what he's out there, it was a cheap difference, I absolutely will, one of the things, and I, I don't wanna stamp my ground, but, you know, we got employees out there, and we said we're gonna put policies in place, somewhere like Bob who's working out there, absolutely will, he deserves a pair of boots and he deserves to have a uniform shirt.
Um, what is, what is happening, help me out here, what's happening at Raspus, meaning that there are like five or six RVs or whatever back there, do not disturb, you know, pass. What? Raspus, the building behind Raspus, or behind Raspus.
This painting place?
Yeah, one on the highway, there's a bunch of RVs back there, right? Am I going crazy here, or, Brooke, am I?
No, you're not crazy.
Oh, whoa.
There is actually RVs back there.
Do I find that, Joe?
There are.
And there are.
There are at least three full-size RVs back there with a pitbull tied between two of them and no trespassing signs in the windows of the RVs. It looks like we're sponsoring the cast of Breaking Bad, I kid you not. And I think, I honestly, I, I don't know this for sure, I'll go on, I'll go on tape saying it, I, I swear somebody lives in that building, or lives in one of those RVs, there are cars in and out of there all the time. It's.
Can we have our, can we have our three police cars?
So.
Have our three police cars.
I.
I'm not saying, they're dating, like, we got it, and it's on our highway, and you're like, what?
That'd be a good place to drop off that nuisance dog.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we could let that, we could charge, we now have a. No, 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 hold on, you really want Peter to bring it down, I think, let's do that.
We'll just say Michael Bay's first.
I'm done.
Do you see those people from your place?
A couple questions on the manner report.
Alan, Bart, Shannon.
They got a fifty-three point eight one percent rate increase?
Now they got a twenty-four.
Oh, I know, I, I see that, but then also they went ahead and then up the amount that they're giving to the employees.
They got, she's having a hard time trying to keep the employment, you know, they got ads in the newspaper.
Okay, but what was it before? It says a motion was made by Moleskine to increase the facility contribution to four fifty a month.
I think it was a hundred dollar.
Was it three or three fifty? I, I thought it was fifty percent.
It went up to four, I thought it ended up at four seventy-five.
Well, for Julie.
No, for her, I thought it was all of them.
It was all of them.
No. She was just authorized to go another.
No, they, that motion didn't pass, and then they just did four seventy-five across the board.
Right, they didn't, the, the motion was not, they made a motion to go up to discretionary to four seventy-five, but then they, uh, nobody seconded it, so they went ahead and dropped it off the floor and then made another motion.
And how many employees does that affect? I mean, this is, this is my problem again with this board, is there's no rhyme or reason and no fiscal responsibility and nobody holds an account.
What are, what are they supposed to do with that? And you're getting swiped out.
Start, start shopping it. Judy, you can shop from, you can shop insurance from somebody other than Cheryl Bailey, she is not the one-stop insurance shop.
Well, I, that's fair.
Well, they haven't done that in six years.
That's fair. You gotta handle that, so.
But once again, if we continue to let them do whatever they want, they're never gonna go look anywhere else, 'cause all we have to do is just make a motion and prove how much we're gonna give ourselves, done it. I mean, the city employees don't get a hundred and fifty percent of the contribution that they were given?
They get paid not to take the insurance, well, they have that option.
Do they?
Do they? I don't know, you don't know, or you do?
I don't know, I'm just, I wouldn't. It just, it, like I said, it just seems.
I think they have trouble getting people to take the insurance at all, number one, they have a lot of.
I don't think they have trouble to get the people to take the insurance.
Well, it worked, that was the problem when they started out. Now, when it's mandatory that they have insurance, I'm sure it's changed a lot.
And it's jumped up, huge, I mean, and they were the high risk?
Um, no, I, I've expected this all along from Blue Cross Blue Shield, in fact, I was surprised it was only twenty-four, and the fifty-some percent if they go in January.
Okay, but their rate increased twenty-eight percent, and we increased their, the contribution we're giving them by fifty percent, once again, it's, one's greater than the other. It's not like we're saying, hey, we're gonna step up and do this percentage wise.
Well, if you want to bring it forward, I, I understand they gotta, I don't think Julie would let them do that and destroy her budget.
The deal is, the deal is, they aren't getting paid enough at the manner to keep the employee.
Which, she just got that approved with her new budget, she put in what she wanted with that ability to give those raises.
And now that they're having to buy their insurance, they have to have insurance, that means their pay home pay is even less.
So, you would think we would shop that a lot more than just say, we'll take what Blue Cross.
I don't know that they did.
They went ahead, I will say, if, they went to Blue Cross Blue Shield with a December renewal, because they were forced by a deadline to either take the twenty-eight percent.
Yeah.
Or get stuck in January, that December.
Everybody's doing that, and they're good.
And, and I, I already, when that came as an option for the city, I, regardless of how they do it, doesn't matter, for the city, I said absolutely not. And we've had, uh, our broker, this Judy Bauer, has been in, and I've said point blank, I, we are shopping, and I'm looking at every opportunity that's out there, including new co-op opportunities under the Affordable Healthcare Act.
And that's all I was asking, I, I mean.
That's why she did it though, Joe, is because they went ahead and hurried up to get the December renewal, they lost a month, but now they're changing their whole, um, system of insurance to be from a December to December. You know, she lost this month, the month of December, those that were, that had premiums and had, what do you call it, uh, deductibles, met, you know, we, if you like to get your last minute surgeries or whatever you wanna get done, they lost a month, and they'll never get that back.
Well, they lost a month, but they just gained eighteen hundred of their premiums being extra paid. Joe, what you're saying is you wanna talk this over with the administrator, right, or you wanna call somebody in here to report more often, I mean, you can't do anything about it here.
Yeah.
Well, but this, this, it's a constant, it's a pattern. I understand, I understand. They go do whatever they want, and then we go, what? And they go, oh, well, we'll come talk to you about it in a couple months. You could put some specific limits on the manner board as to what they can do, or require more frequent reporting, or any number of things. Or they'll just go on their way.
If it's such a concern, why don't we just abolish the manner board, and then we just do it? I'm just saying, if, if we, and I'm not, I'm not, I understand your point, Joe, but we seem to have a constant problem of this happening, where you have a problem with this, well, then let's just have them come to us, and then we'll deal with that, plus fifteen minutes meeting anyways. I mean, everyone already wants to get the hell out of here now, so let's have a few minutes, I mean, they're an inexperienced board, and, and I think they were in a tight place as it was, they could've shopped around, did they have time to shop around, I don't know, man.
Jason, it's been like this since I've been on the council.
All right, well.
And you've had conflicts of interest up there for so many years that you, we couldn't even penetrate, when you had board members selling insurance to the.
That's not the issue, but we don't have that, but I.